I'd like to call this meeting in the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hershey. Ms. Colasetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilkin.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Next, we have approval of minutes from previous meetings. There are none. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? Seeing none. Next, we have presentations and public input. I'm not aware of any presentations. If anyone in the audience would like to come up to the microphone, you are welcome to. You'll have five minutes. Just please say your name for the record.
Hi.
Sir, are you able to see the timer from the microphone? Okay? You can? Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Ron Kester. I live at 1209 West Oregon Street on the west side of Urbana. When we think about community justice, we often start by imagining the suffering we want the police to address. This was the premise of the War on Drugs. Narcotics created a lot of suffering, so we realigned the police, the courts, and prisons to incarcerate millions in a multi-generational war. As we know now, thanks largely to the legal scholar Michelle Alexander, the catastrophic war on drugs from the beginning was an excuse to lock up people of color and anti-war activists. The legacy of that police action against the citizenry is reflected in broken families and communities, widespread corruption within the criminal justice system, and significant distrust of the police. Here's the takeaway: Many forms of suffering are beyond the scope of police and the criminal justice system to address. Efforts to do so, even with bipartisan support, often create more problems than they solve. As a longtime member of Community Court Watch, I've attended hundreds of arraignment court hearings to get a sense of the problems we ask the criminal justice system to address and how it performs. Arraignment is the first formal hearing of a case when the state lists the charges, possible penalties, and potential detainment. Arraignment hearings offer a few pretty obvious lessons. Black citizens are much more likely to appear in arraignment court than white citizens. Members of the white middle class hardly ever appear in arraignment court, and members of affluent and professional classes never appear in arraignment court. From this, we might conclude that the criminal justice system is a form of apartheid: two standards of justice racially and economically segregated for a single citizenry. The history of American justice is rife with apartheid. For instance, through the phenomenon of Midwestern sundown towns, so named because people of color were not permitted, under threat of violence, to be present after dark. Urbana was not a sundown town, though Muhammad, St. Joseph, and Gibson City all were. And as we know, most of the police and correctional officers who work in Urbana prefer to live in small towns like these. My sense is that we will struggle to acknowledge Midwestern apartheid, though its legacy shows up all the time in the "us versus them" rhetoric that's so easy to hear in small towns. Easy to find in the criminal justice system too, which is built on the premise of adversarialism: the people versus the accused. And thus, a racialized legacy of apartheid, even today, can find common expression in policing, the courts, and the system of incarceration. I can't imagine a time when this won't be true, at least until the criminal justice system becomes something other than what it is. What we can do in the meantime is examine the data to see where we are in relation to our racialized history. Here are three statistics that speak to the condition of policing in Urbana, all from 2022. Of drivers stopped by Urbana Police, forty-six point five percent were black. Of the ninety-five incidents involving one hundred and seven citizens in which the Urbana Police used force, seventy-nine people were black. That's seventy-four percent. And of the forty-two incidents in which Urbana Police pointed or displayed firearms, thirty of the people so threatened were black, seventy-one percent. At the county level, in 2023, of the more than four thousand people booked into the Champaign County Jail, fifty-seven percent were black. A black resident of Urbana is around three point five times more likely to end up in jail than a statistical average would predict. As you consider adding eight more police positions, I encourage you to ask how this change in use of force will speak back to the legacy of racial apartheid that we inherited. Will it improve the situation? Possibly make it worse? Maybe you're of the opinion that the legacy of apartheid requires a response that does not include the police, that aims to develop a new approach to justice that leaves the use of force potential behind by privileging trauma-informed, nonviolent communication. A community responder model proceeds with the notion that human suffering and harm done are best addressed through dialogue and relationships, not the threat of force. I'm optimistic that a commitment by the city to move toward a community responder model will engender trust and open the way for more nonviolent interactions generally. I encourage you to ask of the budget before you: How will the proposals for 2025 address the legacy of racism that our community still bears the weight of? How will we do better? Thank you.
Hi there, City Council. My name is Ben Jocelyn. I live here in Urbana. First, I want to clarify a mistake that I made last year, or last week, when I said that race was written out of the contract. It was written very prominently in the RFP that the goal of the Barry Dunn report was to minimize harm done by race, or done because of race, homelessness, and other circumstance. And then, because I'd heard that in a conversation with another community member that Michelle Weinzele had said that race wasn't in scope, and that's why it wasn't in the report that had been issued at that point so far, I then checked the deliverables, and I had not seen race. I was wrong, because it was included as the main purpose, but it is not included in any of the deliverables, nor is it properly addressed in the reports that we have seen so far. So, while in name, the word "race" does exist there, what has been delivered to our city is, again, a far cry from what was promised and what was set out by the council when they started this process, along with being woefully underdone. I then want to move on to sort of talk for a second about how it was also raised that some people... Just the idea that, like, the only reason that you get interacting with the cops is because you're a criminal. I was only arrested once in my life, and in that time, I spent time in jail. And then, for two years, I was going, traveling back and forth to the court until my charges were finally dismissed, and I have no record because I hadn't done anything wrong. And so, I think that the idea that the only folks who end up dealing with the cops are criminals is not a particularly salient point, and at a point where it's been shown that about as many US folks in the United States have criminal records as do college degrees. So, it's a huge portion of our population who's being taken to jail, and that's just not how people get better. And right now, in our city, we currently spend about eight hundred and forty dollars per household per year on our current police department, and y'all are being asked to consider a dramatic, dramatic raise. That's not what I want done with my money, and I don't think it's what the citizens of Urbana want done with their money. And so far, this council has been very police-expansionist. Whether we feel that in our hearts, or whether or not that's how we want to view ourselves, what's happened over the last three years, and at the last meeting Diane Marlin talked about how the police chiefs for the last twenty years during her time have always said that they need more staff. And I think that that is true about every department in every branch of the government. And simply having a police chief that always says that they need more staff doesn't mean that it is, in fact, the priority of the people for that to be where we spend our money. I also want to mention that I think that spending more money on the police takes the control of our city government out of our own hands. We know that police unions make accountability very, very difficult. We've seen that locally. We saw, I mean, we've got the statistics to show that right now the action of our police department and the police departments around mean that the jails are very, very racially disproportionate. The violence is not meted out equally. And accountability for that simply isn't in your hands when you put it in the hands of, when we go to police budget. That funding is no longer, we can't, we don't have control to fire people who do the wrong thing. That's got to go through the police union. We know how difficult that is. And all that money goes out of town. It's so much easier to hire folks who are solving problems in town, and, like, violence is ended through understanding and resourcing. And if we pay folks who already live in town and who are already in the town to solve those problems, that's going to be much more effective than hiring folks from out of town with huge budgets, and then trying to teach them to understand the community. That's just not a cost-effective model. So, I hope that all of you commit to not hiring any more police officers. I think that's the only acceptable position for us to be in. Also, it was mentioned, you know, we've said again and again that the vast majority of calls are for nonviolent offenses. It was brought up that some of those are for domestic assaults. We have a very famous police abolitionist up in Chicago named Mariam Kaba, who began her career trying to end all domestic violence and transitioned to being a police abolitionist because she saw just how poorly the police are equipped to handle domestic violence incidents across the board. And so, domestic violence is not a reason to hire more police. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Faith Ryan. I live in Urbana's Second Ward. I'm here again today. Last week, I was here doing the same thing. And I've kind of given up on writing really moving public comments. I don't, I just, I think, I've accepted that you guys aren't listening, and it seems like our public comments are a big waste of time to you. Last week, I came here describing a really traumatic experience I had with the police, and I'm going to put it on the record again really quickly here. On April 26th, I was brutalized by a police officer with the University of Illinois Police Department. He was intentionally covering his identity with a black gator, black sunglasses, and black gloves and a black hat. He threw me to the ground by my shoulders and my neck. So, that was incredibly traumatic, and I came here. And you guys all had time to respond to us, and some of you did, and none of you addressed what I had said to you. And I also forgot to mention that during that assault, a police officer had dropped a fully-loaded magazine on the ground in addition to a body camera. So, just want to put that on the, on the public record again. I also want to say that I didn't mention last time, I am a white person. I'm five-three, I'm twenty-three, and I was really menacing to a police officer, twice my size. Mortified, I guess. And I can't imagine what sort of brutality could have happened if I wasn't white. You know, I have sciatic pain now. Whoopty-doo, right? I'm not in, I was not in jail. I was let go. And I know how police work. Y'all work together, right? All the cops that Friday came down from every corner of the county in riot gear. They loaded MTD buses, ready to go, right? So, I know someone knows who did that to me. I, I'm almost sure of it. You know, I've seen the footage, like I said, over and over again. So, I'm just asking, what are you afraid of? What are you so afraid of? Like, I feel like y'all are afraid of us. What, and what were the police afraid of? The destruction of some grass, some turf grass? Like, it really does seem like people were more concerned over students exercising the right to protest than a genocide. You know, a lot of the people that are in this room pressured you guys to pass a ceasefire resolution. And we're here also, because these issues are intertwined. And we're going to waste your time, if that's what it is. We're going to waste your time, and we're going to inconvenience you, because your constituents will be a reminder to your complicity in police brutality in this community, the greater CU area. And you won't tire us. We all care about the same shit, in fact. And from Palestine to Urbana, we will struggle to end policing as we know it and its brutality in our communities. The ceasefire resolution was not the end, so get used to seeing our faces.
Hello, my name's Jane McClintock. I'm in Ward Two in Urbana. And I have spoken before about the fact that I don't think that this investment is necessary, that I think we have a lot more study to do with the Barry Dunn report, and that it's really not going to be the right move for Urbana. But I want to speak not about that today, because you've heard, you've heard me say it before. I want to say two things. One is that other people in Urbana agree. We're circulating a petition. It's at www.uCIMC.org/petition. And we currently have three hundred and eighty-six signatures that are in support of not hiring any more police officers until we invest in community services or, and/or, community responders that are outside of the police department. And it's been, you know, we've only had this petition going for about a week since we just saw this budget. And, you know, people are really responding to this, and I think, you know, we want to make it easy for you all to hear from your constituents. And there's a lot of folks that don't feel like this is the investment that we need to make right now. I also just want to ask a question, which, when I read through the budget, I don't understand how we could pass this budget that just doesn't seem to be affordable for next year, because we're spending down the savings to pay for this, down to the minimum allowable percentage of recurring expenses. So, I just don't understand how this would be affordable in the following year, because the fund balance goes down to twenty-six point one percent, when the minimum we're allowed to have is twenty-five percent. So, if someone could clarify that later, I would appreciate it. Again, I urge you not to make this unprecedented investment in police, and instead, to invest in community services and to finish the study of alternative response models, which would be a really good choice for Urbana. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name's Sana Sabualla. I live in Urbana, Ward Five. And I'm a member of CU Muslim Action Committee. I'm here once again to say that I think the council shouldn't approve increasing the police budget or hiring more police. The requested budget increase of over $2 million is the largest year-to-year increase ever. I'm sure you've heard that before. And it's at a time when, according to the FBI, crime is at an all-time low. It's particularly distressing to see this proposal after the community has asked for the city to look into alternatives to policing. We know increasing the number of police or providing the police with more money has not solved any problems with policing in the past, so I don't see how it would now. In order to look into alternatives of policing, I know you, you turn to the Barry Dunn. However, closer look at the Barry Dunn report show that it's shoddy work. I've come here on record as a mixed-methods researcher to talk about the failures of the Barry Dunn report before, and today, I just want to reiterate some of those points again, especially when it comes to community solicitation and incorporating community feedback into recommendations. As we've established over time, there, you could pick any section of the Barry Dunn report and find flaws with it. But I want to focus specifically on the end of Section 2.2, specifically Section 2.28, Community Survey Feedback, and then the section Recommendations. So, Barry Dunn claims that they did a robust solicitation of the community to ask about UPD specifically. And I want to highlight that these conversations, the conversations were centered around UPD specifically, and not from what I can tell from the report about general safety, alternatives to policing, or any other question that would have allowed any kind of unstructured answer. All of the questions were about Urbana Police Department specifically. So, they talked, so they talked to the community, they say, using a three-statement online survey, a community stakeholder meetings, professional stakeholder interviews, and meetings with community interest groups and individuals. Then, they say they had one community stakeholder meeting that included a wide range of groups and named specifically representatives from the LGBT community, the Hispanic Latinx community, local-national alliance on mental health and illness, and the NAACP. They do not list how many meetings they had. They do not list how they advertised those meetings. It seems that there was only one. They do not identify, describe how they identified who the stakeholders were. They do not explain how they chose who would be invited to the meetings, or who was seen as a community stakeholder or a community representative. So, none of the specifics about the methodology in terms of soliciting community feedback was in this two-hundred-plus-page report. They don't include any quotes from any community members. Elsewhere in the report, they include, when they talk about police interviews, they include the methodology for coding that survey data, but they don't when it comes to the community. So, in the report, they say things like, "Participants indicated opportunities exist for further crisis intervention training." And generally, when you make a statement like that in a, in a report, you would include quotes that explain why they're making that, like, overall analysis. Or they would at least have keywords that they used to group sets of quotes to make that analysis, right? But they didn't include any of that in the Barry Dunn report when talking about community feedback. So, like, what kinds of things led them to the conclusions that they did? Did they look at words like mental health? Did they look for words like lack of training? We don't know. Nonetheless, they do say the community members would like to see more crisis intervention training for mental health response and more transparent data practices on UPD's part. Most concerningly, it seems that the community responses that they did collect didn't impact the recommendations whatsoever. The recommendations in Section 2.2 are extremely vague and look suspiciously similar to recommendations in Oak Park's Barry Dunn report. My main point in saying all of this is that City Council needs to engage with the community around issues of alternatives to policing more. Barry Dunn did not do a good enough job. And we're here telling you, so many of us are here telling you to, like, listen to us a bit more, right? There are lots of opportunities to talk to the community about alternatives to policing. We've come here to do that. But also, there was a presentation at the IMC on March 24th that was with other consultants that was focused on alternatives to policing. Barry Dunn people didn't seem to have attended that. Maybe some of you did. But I'm here to say, don't increase the police budget. Seriously consider alternatives before hiring more police. This is what the community wants. If you don't believe me, there's that petition. And if you don't believe me, at least, like, take some time to try to understand more deeply what community stakeholder, who the community stakeholders are, and what they actually want. Thank you.
Hey there. My name is Evelyn Nittle. I am a Champaign-Urbana resident as well. And I'm strongly against increasing the police budget or staffing at any point. And I'd also like to express some concern regarding the discussion surrounding this specific issue. And also, just address some potential blind spots from last week's meeting. I, another speaker briefly addressed this, but last week, I was really concerned when Ms. Hershey of Ward Three shared her, shared about her trust in the police force and stated that she did not have negative interactions with the police because she, in her own words, "does not hang with the criminal element." This seems to be a purposeful implication that those who express concern about an increase in police budget are criminal or associated with them. I'd like to point out how genuinely dangerous it is for a government employee in a leadership position to imply that those that disagree with police reform or, you know, budgets are criminals. People who disagree with her are criminals. Criminal is a convenient and a fear-inducing word to throw around when speaking about law enforcement, but its real meaning is varied. It is often used to include black people, the unhoused, the undesirable, unproductive, or mentally ill members of society. People who are already over-criminalized and most likely to be killed at the hands of your police. These are people that our council members are implying somehow deserve their negative police interactions, which I personally find to be disturbing. The rhetoric that only criminals have to feel, fear the police is outdated and purposefully ignorant of the reality that the American police system is dangerous and deadly to many, here in Urbana and throughout America. If you don't interact with the police regularly, that's fantastic. I'm happy for you. That's great. But your experiences aren't universal, unfortunately. And your opinion should be informed by those who have had frequent police interactions. People who are forced to interact with the police, not as friends, or coworkers, or city council members, or mayors, but those who are interacting as, with police as, hold on, I lost my place. As criminalized individuals, as, oh, fuck. Whatever. People who are forced to interact with police who are prospeiled and mistreated. By sharing how little real-life experience you have being policed, the council is showing that they are not experts about this, and they are unqualified to make decisions that will affect those who are actually policed and criminalized regularly. This is why you have public comment to begin with. Trust us, trust your public and your community members when they share their real-life experiences with the police. And trust us when we share that we are wary of the police force that you intend to fund. I am concerned that the council seems to be basing their decisions about police funding solely on personal experiences, rather than investigating their public's feelings about, and their interactions with the police. If you, if you don't interact with them regularly, that's fantastic, but you are not knowledgeable on the real-life consequences of overpolicing. And because of the privileges you are afforded as city council members, you still get to make decisions for those people. You are making decisions that will not affect you, but instead will affect the most vulnerable of your community. Additionally, at the last meeting, Mayor Marlin took time after public comment to react to individual comments made by specific constituents. Instead of reacting with an open mind, she chose to speak in support of her own opinion, to condescendingly inform the public that she makes $75,000 a year, rather than $100,000 a year. a year, and she chose to lead a letter from a personal friend of hers that she handpicked in support of the police force expansion. I don't find any of that to be appropriate. It's not appropriate content of a mayor of 40,000 people, especially because it's wasting our time. Like, at the same time, she attempted to discredit claims made by her constituents during public comment implying that we don't know what we're talking about, after the time that had passed for constituents to address or correct her in her confusion regarding the shared statistics. So to reiterate for the mayor, or for anyone who wasn't here last week, 73% of 911 calls made were nonviolent or noncriminal. This is what we said last week. I do apologize, because it's actually 72%. 72% of calls were found to be noncriminal or nonviolent, according to the Barry Dunn report, your report. Your own source states that 64.4% of calls to Urbana police were not related to any crime, and the rest of the 72% is made up of noise or music complaints only. Nonviolent, noncriminal, these things do not require a police response. It seems to me that, instead of being understaffed, the police are poorly managed and less necessary than people believe, and we should not fund them any further.
My name is James Kilgore. I'm president of Urbana. I'm also a member of First Followers. So we from First Followers have come here tonight and have been coming on many occasions to stand in opposition to the proposal to hire additional police officers in Urbana. And probably more than most people in this room, we understand the ways in which violence impacts people's lives. The members of First Followers have been directly and indirectly impacted by violence of all sorts. Our members have been incarcerated for decades, suffered in solitary confinement, been held in youth detention centers, been wounded by gunfire, as well as suffering the violence of poverty, being unhoused, being unable to find work, lacking the resources to pay medical bills. Some of us have lost family members and other loved ones to gun violence. We have also lost people who have been part of our program to gun violence and to the violence of decades of incarceration. This collective experience is what brings us here tonight and drives us to look for solutions beyond increasing the police force. We fully recognize, not to discount anyone's experience, but we fully recognize that the Urbana Police Department is not the Chicago Police Department. The Urbana Police Department does not have a wretched history of violence against people of color like people in larger cities. The police in Urbana are far from perfect, but people in our city don't generally live in absolute terror of the police, for the most part, the way people on the south or west side of Chicago do. But that doesn't mean we need more police to solve the major problems of the city. As a university town, those who represent the public face of Urbana like to pretend that overall, this is a comfortable town, a nice place to live for everyone in suburban comfort and security. According to that narrative, the problem is that there are a few bad apples who are creating the problems. This is not the reality. Two years ago, we conducted a survey focusing largely on the black community in Champaign and Urbana, and we asked people, what were the main causes of violence and what would be the best solutions? The people we surveyed targeted poverty and easy access to guns as the main causes of violence. When we asked them about the quality of services, people actually rated the quality of mental health services and the opportunities for black businessmen worse in performance than that of law enforcement. But when we asked for solutions, almost no one suggested that we need more police. They said we need more programs for young people and constructive events that involve family members and mentors. They also said we needed more community involvement and increasing awareness that everyone is impacted by the problems in our city. For us, the most important suggestion that came out of this survey was that we consult young people, especially black youth, about the issues of violence, since they are the ones who are most directly impacted. Chief Boone has done us one great favor. He has produced data that highlighted that virtually all those dying or wounded from gun violence in Urbana are black youth. This is known by most people, but it is rarely mentioned in public discourse. We try to hide the racism and poverty of Urbana behind the facade of projects like the Royer Hotel. The city of Urbana must own up to this issue and address the fact that 27.7% of the people in this city live in poverty, as compared to 11% across the state of Illinois, that over 30% of the black population in Urbana lives in poverty. So the solution is to address the issue of poverty, to provide better mental health services and better housing opportunities. In the long run, addressing these issues will increase peace and security in this community, not more police.
Good evening, board. I hope everyone is doing well. My name is James Tiger Corbin. I am a longtime resident of Urbana, Illinois, and I just want to speak to the fact of the co-responders program, increased collaboration and communication model. And just to start off, the co-responder program requires the collaboration, communication typically expected of law enforcement partners to occur between law enforcement and mental health professionals, which helps build better relationships between the two groups. This teamwork can also help identify gaps in services as well as resources, leading to better coordination and referrals for individuals in crisis. The entire purpose of the community policing is to build communication and collaboration inside of the communities that law enforcement protects. And co-responder programs enhance this proven strategy. One of the main ways that co-responder programs increase collaboration and communication is by developing a better understanding between law enforcement and mental health professionals. By working together in the field, police officers and mental health clinicians can share their respective knowledge and expertise, which can lead to a more comprehensive and coordinated response to a crisis situation, as well as in lesser stream situations. For example, in Eugene, Oregon, the crisis assistant helping out on the street programs pairs a mental health clinician with a medical responder to 911 calls related to mental health crisis. The team is trained to de-escalate situations and provide mental health support, rather than simply relying on already stretched-in law enforcement to handle the situation. This collaboration has resulted in reduced arrests and use of force incidents and improved outcomes for individuals in crisis. However, a critical thing for this collaboration to occur is to have a way to communicate and share information between branches of the program. A fantastic tool to help with this need is to use the co-responder software, well, we're going to go back, well, I want to say one other little short thing right here. Law enforcement officers and mental health professionals on co-responder teams can work together to de-escalate, again, potentially volatile situations. Using verbal communication skills and other de-escalation techniques, co-responder teams can help prevent situations from escalating to violence or arrests. Another good department to look at is Denver Police. Denver Police Department Co-Responders Program, which launched in 2016, the program pairs mental health clinicians with police officers to respond to mental health crises. I'm speaking more in favor of, you know, I would say a co-responder method than just a regular increase in the budget of, and this could be, this will actually bring down the price and not increase our budget as much, but if we are going to adopt something, I will support a co-responder method outside of just hiring straight officers. Thank you, that's all I want to say. That's it.
My name is Tammy Little, and I'm a Transitional Housing Coordinator with First Followers. Just to present some of the facts of the population that we deal with, every year, the state of Illinois Department of Corrections releases 219,808 men and 58,000 women back into our society who have paid their debt to society. As a result of the staggering number of individuals coming into our communities, they are released with $25 to survive. Most of us will agree $25 won't get you a hotel stay, or maybe even a meal, at our prices today. While some of these individuals do have family support, most of them do not. Most of them, for some of them that have been incarcerated for a significant amount of time, no longer have family members. So as a result, these individuals, without proper housing, roam around our community. Last year, I had the privilege of partnering with the Regional Planning Commission with the TBRA program, which is a tenant-based rental assisted program, and we assisted approximately 22 individuals. Some were women with children and accommodated them with one-year vouchers. We exhausted the first set of funding in a month and a half. Then they released another set of funding, and we exhausted that funding in three weeks. Currently, there is no more funding, so we've been told. So we believe that the council should consider investing more money in housing programs for individuals coming home rather than hiring more police. Because if they don't have housing, they will end up back in the hands of the police and probably back in jail. Thank you.
My name's Stephen McGuire. We've heard often in the last few city council meetings that a budget is a moral document. If our budget reflects our morals, then we only care about who is in power. The police union can knock at your door and demand money. When people that need more money, that need part of that $300,000, and I'm glad you raised it to $300,000 from $100,000, but the sad truth is, it needs to go much higher. The fact that, I believe your name is Tammy? Tammy said that her program has no funding. That needs to be first. If our police department has more people than the national average, and we have homeless shelters that don't even have a waitlist anymore, that needs to go first. And so if your morals aren't dictated by mere deference to power, then invest in social services until they're funded at the level that's needed. That means no more homeless shelters that have ends to the waitlist, because there are just so many people calling who have people who need shelter that they just can't even have a waitlist anymore. That means Tammy's program has funding. That means there are no shortages of beds in psych hospitals. Before you hire any more police, do that. Otherwise, take a fearless moral inventory. Thank you.
I'm Brad Allen, and I'm here to voice my opposition to the increase in the police budget and the expansion of the police force. The proposed increase of over $2.7 million would be Urbana's largest increase, despite Barry Dunn reporting that the police department lacks transparency in how it conducts internal investigations. Any credible sociologist will tell you that hiring more cops does not reduce crime, an improvement in economic conditions does. Speaking of crime reduction, the crime rate in Urbana dropped by five points last year, and even the FBI admitted that the crime rate in Urbana is at a 10-year low. The money that is being proposed for an increase to the police budget should be spent on community investments instead, such as alternative methods to policing. And as someone who knows multiple people who have gone through mental health crises and they have needed someone to check up on them for a wellness check, I'm telling you, the last people in the world that they want to show up are the cops. They do not need police showing up for a wellness check. They need trained professionals and people who know what they're doing, and I think that any amount of funding that would otherwise go to the police should go to these alternative forms of community spending.
My name is Elizabeth Sotropoulos. I was born into homelessness, and I lived with my parents in a homeless shelter for the first four months of my life. My family was destroyed because of a lack of well-funded social services, which is what we are all asking of you, demanding of you tonight. I also work with children and teens, many of whom live in Urbana. Those reasons are why I am here to stand with Urbana residents who are asking this council to prioritize people, the working-class people, and the children of Urbana, especially those marginalized by poverty and racism, over police. Mayor Marlin and Police Chief Boone are requesting an increase of over $2.7 million in the budget for the Urbana Police Department, which is the largest year-to-year increase ever. The consulting firm Barry Dunn conducted a study, which to my understanding is not yet complete, to analyze public safety in Urbana. The study was funded thanks to the "Defund the Police" movement from 2020, which is stated in this study. I find it not only strange, but wholly unjust, that the Urbana Police Department has no formal mechanism for managing performance or assuring accountability for attaining established goals and performance measures, and yet you want to hire more sworn police officers. After a report, and FBI data have made clear that crime in Urbana is at the lowest it's been in years, and this report also found that there were no critical public safety issues in Urbana. The Barry Dunn report revealed that the Urbana Police Department responded to just over 10,500 noncriminal calls for service in 2022, which is more than 2/3 of the total time spent on calls for service, with criminal incidents representing only 29% of time spent. Barry Dunn stated that noncriminal calls for service are a major opportunity for implementing alternative response models, which the Urbana community actively supports. Why wouldn't you all implement an alternative response model? Almost 30% of Urbana residents live in poverty. Sworn officers make about $94,000 a year, more than twice the per capita income of Urbana residents. Why are you recommending a nearly $3 million police budget increase when there are so many organizations and agencies in Urbana that could use this money to meet the real needs of Urbana residents? We know that violent crime is reduced when people's basic needs are met. When people have affordable housing, food security, quality education, good jobs, physical and mental health care, violent crime goes down. $3 million could help tackle the root of violent crime in Urbana, which, again, violent crime has been decreasing without hiring more cops. The Urbana Police Department overpolices black residents at an alarming rate. From 1988 to February 2023, 42% of arrests were of black folks, while only 16.9% of Urbana residents and 14.6% of Champaign County residents are black or African-American. I have to ask, is this why you're so interested in hiring more police officers? The city of Urbana needs to invest in its people, not in policing. We need to address poverty, housing costs, homelessness, and the lack of adequate and affordable mental health services. If Urbana wants to address crime, they need to focus on eradicating the root causes of crime. Hiring more cops only means that police suppression of poor, working-class, and mainly Black residents will increase. And the people of Urbana deserve better. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lila Leopold. I'm an Urbana resident in Ward Four. And I'm here to add my voice to that of others here tonight calling for alternative response models to policing and to not spend another dime on sworn officers. The increase in the budget of, you know, several million dollars, that is money that we'll never see again, that will go into a system of policing that perpetuates more spending with every day, with the equipment, with pensions, I mean, you name it. And that money in the hands of community members, in the hands of any of the organizations that have come forward during Cunningham Township meetings or this evening, from any moving speakers before me, would be investments in a future, not in a system that leads to overpolicing and incarceration, which is also extremely costly. The cost of incarcerating, of incarceration of people in our community is extreme. It is very, very expensive, very traumatizing, life-altering. And there are other ways that we could give people in this community jobs, good jobs that they deserve. So, I, that's, you know, several million dollars into a police budget, we're not going to see that money again. And that money really, really could serve community members so much more through social services and help build the future lives of our youngest community members who, you know, love where they live and should love where they live and want to grow up safe and with opportunities, not, you know, not overpoliced. And we have, you know, a good number of officers who are also community members. But at this time, we don't need more, especially when we're just at the beginning of a discussion about alternative policing models. And I'm continually impressed by, you know, the number of thoughtful organizations across the Champaign-Urbana community who are working on this and have been working on this for decades or in, for some people's entire personal and professional lives that I think we'd be really, really remiss to not continue to learn from everyone in the room tonight, those of you who have experience in this, and all of our community members. This is a really important opportunity not to miss. And I think, you know, you could also be proud that you have so many community members coming forward who want to work together and who trust each other to live somewhere without more police and instead with other alternative response models. And there are the statistics to back this up. There are examples from elsewhere, from here. I mean, this, it's just, you know, the examples are numerous and it really is time that we continue to look at those more deeply rather than adding millions of dollars to a police budget, which, again, we're just not going to see that come back in a way that's really going to build community. And that's, you know, nothing against the potential future officers who, you know, will find jobs in the future here or elsewhere, but that can't be our priority as an entire community. So, thank you.
My name is Mars Gramley. I've spoken here before. I'm here to also voice my opposition to the proposal of raising the budget and number of Urbana police. Time and again, police are caught hurting the people they are sworn to protect. You see it prominently in cases like George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Tortuguita, and Ryan Gaynor, et cetera. The list is near endless. Just a few weeks back, as people have already mentioned, the police in the area were brutalizing peaceful protesters at the U of I. And I know you've heard of at least some of these. If you genuinely have a worry about the safety of the communities you're supposed to protect and care for, I promise you there are better ways to invest extra money you apparently have laying around, like into community programs, or our schools, or resources for the on-house community, which is also a community that is your job to protect and care for, into a skate park to give kids an outlet or keep them in community and out of trouble, et cetera. I'm just telling you to consider your options because I promise if you were thinking and doing the research, this would not be the best option you can find. Thank you.
My name is Gwyneth Crebsio. I'm a resident of Urbana. I live a few blocks from here. First of all, I want to say thank you to everybody else who's given really eloquent speeches tonight. I will not be as composed because frankly, this isn't my job to be making speeches, to be composed. So, I was sitting at home. My dad was making dinner. My mom is visiting in town for the first time in years. And I carved out some time to come and speak to you on something that I really think you have enough evidence and enough voices to know very clearly what your community is asking of you and the kind of safety that we are seeking from our city. And I think you see over and over again that these rooms are filled with people asking for you to reimagine what safety means in our community. And right now, it's not with the city council, it's not with our police, it's with all these people behind me. The people behind me, all these people in our community is what makes me feel safe and what makes me feel like I can be a proud resident of this town. I've been a resident of this town for a long time. I went to Urbana schools. I've been in and out of housing insecurity, food insecurity, and I've come up against these systems a lot of times. When I moved here two years ago was to take care of my father, who was gravely ill and dying. And I had to be constantly afraid and aware of him being in public by himself because he presented with symptoms that to some people might make them think that he was a danger, which is insanity. But he presented with a tremor, he had a long stare, he slurred his words because of his physical illness. And I had to worry about him being left alone in public for fear of the cops getting called on him. And I hope that you know, I don't know if anyone's mentioned this statistic, but a third to a half of the people killed by police have some form of disability. And so I hope that you see, my father went through his illness and his intensely traumatic liver transplant. And I had to, as a member of the community, fear for his life, leaving him in public because of the way that we organize our safety as a community with the police. And so instead of trusting him to be out in public and trusting that the cops weren't going to be called on him, thankfully, that didn't happen. My fears weren't realized and a lot of people aren't that fortunate. Instead, we were able to get him to hospitals, get him to services, get him to social workers that are overworked and underpaid and don't ever get the chance to realize their jobs and their full potential in the way that they want to. They were able to connect us with services that literally saved my father's life. And so, when you're considering increasing a budget for a part of the city's budget that is an active threat to our community as opposed to giving resources to the people that are actively saving lives in our community, I think that's a pretty clear problem. I think there's research to back it up, there's community members to back it up. And I don't think that this is a lot to debate. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Matthew Murray. I'm a resident of Ward Five in Urbana. And I just wanted to make a very sort of brief observation. And that was when someone showed me the data of how many calls to 911 are noncriminal and nonviolent, but the police have to deal with them. I mean, my thinking was, if I was a police officer, I would really not like the fact that social work and mental health intervention responsibilities were being put on my plate, being put on my shoulders for responsibility. And so I thought, you know, I thought, well, the obvious solution to that would be to take some of that work off the police officers so they can focus specifically on crime prevention and investigations and community relations. But instead, I, I mean, I really had to scratch my head when I saw the proposal was not to take that work off of their responsibility and give it to people who are trained to do that, but was to hire 11 more police officers. So essentially, to just keep having more police officers do social work and mental health services. I mean, it honestly just seems very bizarre because you have the study showing the data, showing the need to have a team of people who can respond to situations that concern community members, domestic violence, noise, harassment, but things that are not violent or criminal. And you could have a team that would be trained to deal with that and would also know when they needed to have the intervention of the police to help them out. But I, I just, it just, it really, honestly, it seems like a no-brainer to not expand the police department at the huge cost it's being imposed. And so I definitely am against the city council approving that budget. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Hartman. I live in Urbana and I currently work in Champaign. Two years ago, a friend of mine was experiencing an intense mental health crisis and I wasn't in a position to support that person. So frantically, I was researching the resources available in Champaign-Urbana and I was shocked that there were not the resources that I expected to be there. Prior to that, I had worked in Franklin County, Maine for two years as a victim advocate from 2020 to 2022. As an advocate, I was intimately familiar with resources that they had in the area for my clients who were primarily victims of sexual assault and domestic violence. There were mobile crisis units that were not affiliated with the police. There were places to go. There was a 24-hour helpline. There were emergency funds for people who needed somewhere to stay. This was in a very rural county in Maine, a state with 1.3 million, or 1.3 million people total. There were resources there. And then two years later, in a university town, I was struggling to find anything that would help my friend, anything. At least that did not involve calling the police and their armed officers putting my friend at risk of being hurt, further traumatized, or at worst, but still possible, murdered. So, we don't need more police. There are other places where you can put that money. And from public comment alone, I think that this is clear, let alone with, like, thorough research. So I ask to show that you care, to show that you use the small power that you have for good and to do better by the people. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Derek Briles. I'm a resident of Urbana, Ward Four. I don't want to take up your time or anybody else's time repeating what people have already said, though I really do hope that you all have really internalized the really thoughtful comments that people have made and understand that, how much that resonates with the community. But what I do want to tell you is, you don't have to do this alone. And I don't know why you think that you do. I mean, by your own budget document, in FY '22, the budget was just over 11 million. You want to raise it $5 million in three years? I'm all for throwing money at the police as soon as there's no more homeless people on the street. Let's fund the police. As soon as our poverty percentage goes below 27%, let's fund the police. When there's adequate mental healthcare for people, let's fund the police. When there's an end of food insecurity in Urbana, let's fund the police. When you can fix the damn roads, let's fund the police. Like, I, it's not, I mean, personally, I don't believe in the institution of police. I think it's regressive and harmful. But I'm not here because I'm anti-police. I'm not here to say, "Defund the police." I'm here to say, "Spend your money wisely and don't do this alone." In that three years, what could that $5 million have done for First Followers? What could that have done for Courage Connection? What could that have done for See You Try? What could that have done for RACES? What could that have done for Cunningham Township, who actually serves this community? These are all tools that are already here. You don't have to create them. Don't go create some sort of cockamamie social services within the police department. Why? Why do that? The infrastructure is here. There are people that hear, there are people that already care and they want to do more, but they can't because they don't have the money. Why give it to the police? You don't have to. But once we've taken care of all those issues, sure, give it to the police. Why would I care at that point? Because there won't be a need for crime, right? Desperate people do desperate things. Let's end that desperation. It's really not that complicated.
Hello, my name is Lexi Vogel and I am a constituent of Urbana. I am here to speak against raising police budgets and staffing. And I want to use my time to share a real story about the Urbana police that happened to my best friend. We'll call her Sarah for the sake of privacy. And I am sharing this with her express permission. Sarah is a Black disabled woman that, like many homes, has two large doggos, a Golden Doodle and a mixed hound dog. While they are a lot to care for, for sure, she generally does a great job at taking care of them. She lives alone, she doesn't make much money, she lives a humble lifestyle, she goes to the Idea Store instead of Jo-Ann's. She is an amazing friend and she struggles through no fault of her own due to physical and mental health issues. A few years ago, she was harassed by the Urbana police, five times, about her dogs barking. Now, were they barking when they showed up? No, it had already been long over by then. And being a young Black woman, she was rightly terrified and would call me devastated and unsure what more she could possibly do to help fix it. Her neighbors just didn't like her dogs and would weaponize the police to come harass her at her door. Ultimately, at the fifth visit, police decided that they had no means of helping her with the situation, of remedying it at all, and actually just decided to threaten her with a fine if she couldn't get the neighbors to stop calling them and get the police to control the dogs. Now, to me, this is completely inadequate. This is actually creating more issues and putting more strain on our people than it is going to make anyone else happy. And it actually created a lot of trauma for her. She's scared to open the door. And we are largely in consensus about what the actual issues are here. Those are namely, lack of access to mental healthcare, physical healthcare, poor working conditions, lack of community. And police are not adequately prepared to handle that. They are not even the cheapest option to handle that. However, social workers, therapists, nurses actually do have training when it comes to these kinds of situations. And I wish that one of them could have showed up at her door instead. That's the world I want to live in and you can make it happen. Thank you.
We do have some email comments, but before I read those, just want to check and see if there's anyone else who'd like to provide public comment tonight. Okay. All right, so the first one says, "Hello, my name is Catherine Clancy and I'm a resident of Urbana, Illinois. I'm writing to ask that my comment be entered into the public record. I do not support hiring more police officers nor increasing funding for police more generally. At a time when our trees are dying, our constituents are facing long-term disability from post-viral disease, food and housing costs are soaring out of control, and we're living in a town where one of our largest employers is willing to call riot cops on peaceful protesters, I think we have bigger concerns." The evidence base that more cops reduce crime or in any way- The evidence base that more cops reduce crime or in any way betters our communities is scant, if not absent, whereas the evidence that addresses the climate crisis, the pandemic, unchecked capitalism, and the conflict in Palestine will measurably improve the world does, measurably improve that the world does in fact exist. Thank you, Kate. Next one, please read my comments into the record. Dear City Council members, tonight Chief Boone will likely tell you that the Urbana Police Department needs another huge increase in the budget because he's following Obama's task force on 21st century policing. One of the key components of 21st century policing is to have police coordinate with mental health professionals, sorry, this is quote, "mental health professionals, social workers, crisis counselors, and other professionals making decisions alongside the police regarding planning, implementing, and responding to mental health crisis, mental health crisis situations," end quote. Page 44 of the task force's final report, which can be found at, there's a link that we will include, take note that they're talking about law enforcement coordinating these teams. They're not suggesting that the officers be these teams. In order to make this happen, we need to, they, we need, they have teams to collaborate with. Working with nonprofit organizations is a good start, but with no full-time staff, it is not sufficient. We need programs that are funded with at least one of these professionals on call so they can respond to situations whenever they occur. Boone may also say that officers need to have 40% free time where they're not responsible for calls, investigating crimes, nor doing reports. The logic Chief Boone gave at a listening session at Salt and Light last year is that if they had all this free time, they'd hang out in schools, barber shops, and gather intelligence on what citizens are doing and build trust with the community. As a community member who wants the police to build trust with the community, I can say that this is not a recipe for doing so. A way to build trust with the community is to fix the racial disparity in traffic stops, which are at the highest they've been at in 10 years. Here's a link to a news article detailing this historical and ongoing problem. The problem isn't about the conduct of some other police force in another state. It's about the policing being done right here in Urbana every day. The way to build trust is to listen to us when we say we don't want an enormous police force at the expense of other services. The way to build trust is to hear us when we say we want police community responders. Urbana PD should be supporting these community requests so the departments with whom they should be collaborating actually exist and have the resources they need to do their jobs. So I call on the city council to reject the budget proposal to increase the UPD budget this year. Give your constituents what they want, even though it conflicts with what UPD is asking for. Don't push us to the 98.5% recurring spending limit, making it more difficult to implement alternative responder programs in the future. Show everyone with your vote that you want to see the racially biased traffic stops to be fixed before giving the police more money and more free time. Because the presentation given by Barry Dunn after the first portion of their study acknowledges that, in practice, the additional free time is largely used for traffic enforcement. And as the last 10 years of data have shown us, we already have a well-documented problem in that area. Sincerely, Adam Nichols. One more. Dear Mayor Marlin and City Council members, I want to express my concerns about crime, particularly domestic violence and shooting in our city. As you know, it can be very dangerous for social workers to enter the scene. With that said, we need enough police officers to accompany the social workers. For your convenience, here's a link to the crime statistics by the Urbana Police Department. I urge you to consider both short-term and long-term solutions and vote to support the budget sincerely, Keneda Fay. That one in the subject specifically said to read into the record. Do you have another one? You want, I'll take a break. I've got one more, but you can.
Which one?
This one went to Kate, so it's, yeah.
I've got one. Hello, my name is Charles Davidson. I'm a longtime resident of Urbana. I'm writing to give you my thoughts on the hiring of the 15 police officers that is up for debate. In coming back and forth to the city council meeting and listening to all the people that's concerned about the hiring of the 15 police and doing my own research, the community does not think it's a good idea to go forward with this idea, mainly because of the financial strain it would put on the city. We need more funds for our community, like housing the homeless. You could have bought three tiny homes for the money you paid Barry Dunn. You can easily pay officers for overtime if you need more help. I think they will appreciate it. If you listen to what your community says, and that's what you are supposed to do, you will find a better way to make this work for the people. Thank you and have a blessed day. My name is Charles Davidson, and I approve this message.
Are there other emails that have requested to be read into the record? Just to clarify again, emails that are requested to be read should be read during public comment. Otherwise, they'll be included in the notes afterwards. Anything, Sharice?
Okay, council members, please read this email aloud for public comment. My name is Edgar. I've lived in and near Champaign-Urbana my entire life. Has this already been read? Okay. I urge you to listen to your constituents and vote no on the increased police budget proposal and make good on the promises you've made regarding investment in alternative public safety models. I attended last week's city council meeting and was genuinely appalled by the comments made by Councilmember Sharice Hershey, which to me made clear how disconnected from reality the council can be. As our council, it's your job to amplify the voices of your constituents and listen to, represent, and reasonably meet our needs. When I heard Sharice state that she didn't hang out with the criminal element in regards to her attitude toward police, it made me question how council members see criminality and their community members who commit crime. Who are those that commit crime but those, but people who don't have their needs met? Crime is a language spoken by the unrepresented, the unfunded, and the marginalized. Urbana crime is a direct reflection of your failure as public leaders to meet your constituents' needs. An additional budget increase for our police force while cutting funds toward community development, social services, public arts, Urbana Public Television, the Human Rights and Equity Office, and urban forestry, the things that are preventative care toward crime will not solve the social conditions which create crime. Additionally, comments were made by Councilmember Sharice toward public opinion of Urbana Police Force stating that she's seen police officers pump gas for community members. This comment made my partner and I laugh sheerly at the ridiculousness of how far disconnected this comment is from not just the general experience of the public, but also how far removed this is from the point of why your constituents are standing here before you today, opposing this increased budget. We don't need cops to pump our gas, and we don't need $2 million of our tax dollars going toward cops just because they're capable of being nice people. That isn't the point. The point of the matter is that the council has promised its constituents funding toward alternative methods of public safety and has failed to deliver on that promise. Now, your constituents have to come before you and beg you to do what it is you said you'd do in the first place. It's shameful. While Mayor Marlin picks and chooses which emails to read aloud, which fit her desired narrative, there are people sitting in the crowd today which would kill for a budget increase, like the one you're considering handing to a police force which does not need a penny more funding. People who could make a real difference in the lives of your community and a real difference in public safety. I can tell you firsthand that the funds currently allocated to community development, affordable housing, and free resource centers is not enough. Houselessness has increased 30% from 2023, and many of us cannot comfortably pay our bills or feed ourselves. When you brag about how much you've invested in care for the community, your constituents laugh because we cannot feel its effects. While Mayor Marlin makes $75,000 a year, I make 1/3 of her salary, and I'm still taking time out of my full-time schedule to make and fund free community meals for your community members, which you have failed. Please put these funds toward community services, which would actually benefit your community members and better meet their needs. Thank you, Edgar.
This letter was sent to my office with the request to have it read for public comment at tonight's meeting. It's from Steve Beckett. I was the county board parliamentarian for 10 years during my service on the Champaign County Board. I have attended several hundred governmental meetings over my lifetime, but of course, the most serious ones were during my time on the county board. We often had to discuss personnel matters and did so always in compliance with the law and good personnel practices. Frankly, I was embarrassed to learn that Alderman Evans spoke publicly in his thoughts about any Urbana governmental staffer. That's something that should never, ever occur. It is highly unethical and violative of the personnel exception to the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Any government officer with an ounce of common sense would know that such conduct is improper. My ties to Urbana are longstanding. I am proud to have my law business here and proud to call Urbana my hometown. I appreciate the commitment to public service of all Urbana City Council members and suggest that an apology is in order from at least one of them to the staff members who were the subject of this unethical tirade. Signed, J. Stephen Beckett.
Grace, did you have another one?
Yes, another one that came in. Hello, please read my comment out loud. Dua Aldasuki, Muslim CU resident. To accept adding police without even considering alternative response models and the individual needs of our community is to not serve the residents of this community, but rather individual and personal interests.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. We will move on to new business. The first item, I think we're probably going to talk about a bunch of these together, but the first one is Resolution Number 2024-06-03. Two R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement, Angels Youth Center, Beat the Street, Teen Summit, and we have Bryn Maelser.
Good evening, everyone. So the next 16 resolutions on your agenda all pertain to the Youth Services Grant Program. I'll be discussing them all as one item, and I'll be happy to answer any questions about any of the individual resolutions as well. So as I said, on your agenda are 16 resolutions to approve and authorize the execution of subrecipient agreements as part of the city's Youth Services Grant Program for fiscal year 2025. The award amounts for each, with proposed award amounts for each program can be found in Attachment 1 of your memo, and program descriptions can be found in Attachment 2. In total, the funding that we are proposing for the upcoming cycle is $274,510. We received a lot of really high-quality applications from agencies that are doing really important work in the community. I just want to name each of the agencies here in recognition of the work that they've done in the community. Angels Youth Center, Big Brothers Big Sisters of Central Illinois, Cunningham Children's Home, Crisis Nursery, Don Moyer Boys and Girls Club, Immigrant Services of Champaign-Urbana, Solagracia, Steam Genius, the Urbana Free Library, The Well Experience, Urbana-Champaign Independent Media Center, Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, the Urbana Park District, Urbana School District 116, and RACES. So we are excited to be proposing these agencies for funding in this upcoming cycle. So just a little background on this grant program. So the Youth Services Grant Program annually provides grants to local agencies that support low-income Urbana youth through community-based programming and services. Programming areas include after-school educational programs, recreational activities, violence prevention, as well as mental health and counseling services. In fiscal year 2025, there is a pot of $300,000 in total funding. That amount obviously is pending council approval of the FY '25 budget, as well as HUD's approval of our annual action plan for fiscal year 2025. $270,000 for this grant program comes from the general fund, and $30,000 will come from our community development block grant allocation. So the application process for this fiscal year opened on February 1, 2024, and closed on April 1, 2024. Staff solicited applications from local agencies through the city's social media accounts, the local news media, as well as through countywide social service groups. Staff held two grant assistance workshops for agencies that were interested in applying to learn more about the process and the program, and we posted all of the material, as well as an FAQ document, publicly on the city's website, just to make sure that the application was as accessible as possible. So as I said, these funds, the funding recommendations are for 15 separate agencies to support 16 programs in this upcoming fiscal year. If the resolutions are approved, and if the city's budget is passed, and our annual action plan is approved, staff will execute subrecipient agreements with each agency, and the grant period will begin on July 1, 2024, and will end on June 30, 2025. Just another point about funding. We are proposing to fund RACES survivor services grant program using our community development block grant funding. The other, the remaining other subrecipient agreements would be funded with general funds. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Grace?
Thanks so much for the presentation. Great, and I'm very, feel very fortunate that I did a lot of the reading ahead of time of these for this week, and really appreciate all of the organizations and people who have put in applications. It's really great to see all the work being done. I had a few questions as I was getting into the contracts here, but I guess before that, big picture, could you remind us why we're not allocating the full $300,000 and what will happen with that $25,000 sum?
Yeah, so again, the full funding, again, pending council approval of the budget, would be $300,000. The agreements before you tonight come to a total of $274,510. In terms of budgeting for the awards that we want to give out, our job is to get as close as possible without going over that $300,000 amount, so it's not unusual that we would fall a little bit short, just to ensure that we're staying clear of that, of that limit. The additional funds will be used for youth services programming, social service programming in the upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. And had some more other questions?
Any other questions before we let Grace continue? Go ahead.
Thanks. And so are these all for reimbursement only? Is that right?
Yes, so we're on a reimbursement basis, so agencies will be submitting quarterly reports to us on their accomplishments for their programs. That will include number of Urbana residents served, you know, just a narrative on how the program's going, any success stories that they're having, but also maybe any barriers that they're having to operating their programs. And again, that's just for us to know if we need to, you know, maybe reach out and help them, or, you know, just to kind of see how things are going. So on a quarterly basis, they submit their reports, and then we will reimburse them for that, for that quarter. And we, I mean, we have in the past been flexible in terms of, you know, if an agency maybe wants to do reimbursement twice a quarter, I mean, we're happy to be flexible, but from our experience, that quarterly basis has seemed to work best.
Okay. Because it got me thinking about with ARPA, I think we made a few exceptions for some organizations that the reimbursement model just didn't work, but it sounds like you didn't come across that with this round.
That's correct, yep.
Okay. And then I had, there's two pieces in the contract that I, they don't really quite sit well with me. The city can terminate without cause at any point with just a 30-day notice, and that the city can terminate or change the amount of funding based on available funds within a 30-day notice. And for me, that just seems very heavy on our side, and if we're talking about a lot of, I mean, almost all these organizations are building an entirely new program. And I understand some aspect of protecting ourselves, but I think there's also enough in there about what are the allowable costs and how that works. So I guess questions if you could share some of what's behind those pieces? So I guess questions if you could share some of what's behind those pieces?
So those provisions are in the event, again, because the budget hasn't been approved yet, we just, we want it to be clear that these are tentative recommendations pending these, these funding approvals, and that in the event, for whatever reason, I mean, again, we're not trying to predict anything terrible happening, but in the event that the funding was not there, for whatever reason, we would, we would be able to handle that situation. So again, we obviously are not anticipating that happening, but that's standard language in the agreement, just in the event that the federal funding was held up through CDBG or whatever situation might happen. Again, we're not anticipating that, but it's just to ensure that it's clear that those things could potentially happen.
Yeah, thank you. That makes sense, especially with the timing of the budget's not approved yet, so I guess we can't really be quite signing on dotted lines too ahead of ourselves. What about the termination without cause?
So again, that's, that's language that has been used before. Again, we don't ever anticipate utilizing that clause. It's just in the event that something happens with the program, if we become aware of guidelines not being followed, it's very hard to, you know, obviously, we're not trying to predict that something like is bad is going to happen, but we have in the past had some concerns with, with agencies that said they were going to do one thing, and then were doing something else. And so again, it just gives us flexibility in the event that something like that happened, that we'd have the ability to take the funds and use them for a program that actually is performing as it's supposed to.
Would it be possible to word that, word it that way? That, you know, that would be cause to terminate if they were not fulfilling all the stuff in the agreement and their proposals, their program guidelines, their budget? Just like blanket without cause just seems like very extreme to me.
I would be happy to follow up on that. I don't have an answer to that. I certainly understand what you're saying, and again, that would, would never be the plan to do something like that. It's just in the event that some unforeseen thing happens, we just wanted to ensure that funding can be used for programs that really are, you know, making the impact that they said they were going to make.
Thank you.
Mary Alice?
So this isn't really a question about these particular items, but I know in the past, we've received a report about kind of how many people have been served by, by these programs and so forth. Is there an intent to do that for this past fiscal year, or what is the reporting that would come back to City Council?
Yes. We, we intend to do reports every December, like at the halfway point, so I did miss this past deadline, but we are planning on presenting a report on the, once the program's closed out, I think that would be appropriate for this current fiscal year to come back with the accomplishments and how things went. So absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Grace?
This is a question, maybe for council, in light of moving towards a motion, if there were some that we can omnibus and some that we should leave out separately?
I will say that I need 16 left out of any omnibus motion, and that I did have further conversation with the city attorney and clarified that I just need to recuse myself for the one that I have a conflict of interest for, which is the one for Races, number 16.
If I may also add the suggestion that any items that we are excluding from the omnibus should also be excluded from the consent agenda, simply because the consent agenda in practice is treated like an omnibus at the city council meeting. So it means that members with the need to recuse can still vote on the consent agenda as a whole, minus those items, because they'd be on the regular agenda, so.
Chris?
I would just make a motion now to, for simplicity, to put on the reg, put on the regular agenda, Resolution Number 2024-06-042R, that's number 11, and then Resolution Number 2024-06-047R, that's number 16. I'd like to put those two on the, move that to be on the regular agenda.
Don't we have to take those one at a time? Yeah.
So you either, it's the same amount of votes and motions either way. You either have to have one to combine them and move them to the regular agenda and one motion to approve, so two votes and two motions to do that, or you can take them one at a time and send them to the regular. It's either or, but you can't send them in one and combine them in one. They've got to, yeah.
Okay.
So Chris, do you want to combine those two as exemptions, or do you just want to make a recommendation related to one of them to get us started?
Okay, well, I would move to combine them.
Point of order, if, if nobody has an objection to the, the first 15?
Mm-hmm. It's 11 and 16 that are, but I think, are you asking to do the other ones as an omnibus first?
Might as well put as many together as we're all comfortable with. I think there's only one that we hold off.
There's two.
For your other two.
There's two, yeah.
Okay.
So I think that Chris was recommending that we omnibus those two, and then we'll do the rest. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Omnibusing two is the same as voting them each on their own.
Right.
It's still four votes.
Would you the, the bigger omnibus first?
We certainly can. I think it might clarify things, so if you're okay withdrawing your kind of confusing motion, okay, thank you. And then if there is a motion related to the other, yes.
Doesn't matter that the presentation was for the first one, or that doesn't matter?
As I understand it, Brayden, you presented for all 16, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, cool. So is there, yes, James?
Okay, 11 and 16 are the ones I need to avoid. Okay. So I would move to omnibus, Resolution Number 2024-06-032R, a resolution approving authorization for execution of subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement for Angels Youth Center, Beat the Street Teen Summit, and then Resolution Number 2024-06-33033R, a resolution approving the authorization, execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement, Big Brothers, Big Sisters of Central Illinois, Community-Based Mentoring, and then Resolution Number 2024-06-034R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement, Cunningham Children's Home Residential Treatment Program, Resolution Number 2024-06-035R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement for Crisis Nursery, Safe Children Program, Resolution Number 2024-06-36R, a resolution approving and authorizing execution of subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement for Don Moyer's Boys and Girls Club Rides, Resolution Number 2024-06-037R, a resolution approving authorizing execution of subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement for Immigrant Services of Champaign-Urbana, Child Mental Health Program, and Resolution Number 2024-06-038R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement for Sola Gratia Education Program, Resolution Number 2024-06-039R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement, STEAM Genius, Urbana Loving U Tour, Resolution Number 2024-06-040R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement for the Urbana Free Library, Teen and Youth Maker Program, Resolution Number 2024-06-041R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement, the Well Experienced Well Family Care Program, and then Resolution Number 2024-06-043R, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement, Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, Community Study Center, Resolution Number 2024-06-044R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement for Urbana Neighborhood Connection Center, Youth Development Program, Resolution Number 2024-06-045R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement for Urbana Park District, Youth Scholarship Program, and finally, Resolution Number 2024-06-046R, resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a subrecipient agreement, Youth Services Agreement for Urbana School District 116 Splash After-School Program.
I will second.
Moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice. Any further discussion? Mary Alice?
I just want to echo what Grace had said, which is thanking all of the different organizations that have applied for funds. I found, after several years of being on this committee, that we've had really strong proposals this year. I felt like we were able to do a lot more this year with the amount of funds that we had, and I think the process that we have moving forward is a good process. So thank you, Brayden, for organizing everybody. Appreciate it.
Grace, did I see your hand?
Yeah, Charisse.
Charisse.
I just, I kind of have a question about why, item number 11, why you wanted that to be?
I have an appearance of a conflict of interest, Charisse.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify, get some clarification.
Grace?
Thank you. I would like to explore, change the language of the termination without cause. If the majority of council is in support of that, I would be curious in Brayden or other expert staff taking a stab at wording that calls for termination with cause, you know, even kind of can be loose if the city, you know, determines that the organization is in violation of their original proposal, or budget, or approved activities, then we could terminate with cause. But for me, it just seems like a very big one, especially when, I think I was just mentioning this about how the, the way we just restructured the ambulance franchise has absolutely no right for termination of the city that's not mutual, I'm pretty sure, or maybe with very blatant cause, for a 10-year thing we're locked into, and then we expect other organizations to accept something that's termination with absolutely no cause whatsoever. So I would be interested in exploring language that defines what our actual intention is, if that is our intention.
James?
Because I think this is language we've been using for the last several years, or at least as long as I've been on council. I would support us going ahead with this round, but in future, working on additional language there. I think, I think the challenge is, and actually, there are, there's a, there's a local situation going on right now where a organization took state money and, and did not do what they said they were going to do with it, and it's being litigated. The challenge is that if, if you don't have, if you have to go through a cause due process, the money can already be distributed, and then it's very difficult for the city and the people to get it back and to use it in a way that it needs to be done. I do, I do agree that there's reason to look at a way to adjust that for the future. It has been working fine. We have not, it's not been abused in the time that I've been on council, or I haven't heard it being abused in the past. I don't think we would ever bring it up or utilize it if there wasn't a cause. I think it's just a protection at this point, to protect the people's investment and not have to go through a, a process to justify why we're not doing it. We probably would have a cause, we would probably have a process to do that, but we might actually be continuing to spend money down a path that is not accomplishing what it needs to, and so I would, I'd rather not change the language at this point in time.
Any further discussion? Grace?
Yes, I'm not just, I'm just not sure, point of process, if we could maybe call for a straw poll, because I do want to get the majority of the council, not just one person.
I think we need to do the omnibus first.
Yeah, the current motion on the floor is just to combine, not to approve them or do anything. It's literally just to put them all together to do something with.
Yep, thanks. I forgot after all the readings, sorry, thanks.
So, hold that thought.
As was stated, it's been moved by James and seconded by Mary Alice to omnibus those items. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Now I will take a recommendation for approval.
So I would move that that collection of items be sent to City Council at this point for approval on consent, and if there's a second, we can discuss that.
And I will second that.
Moved by James, seconded by Mary Alice for the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Now you can have a straw poll if you wanted to, too.
Grace?
Yeah, that was all just asking for a straw poll.
Mary Alice?
Can I ask Dave a question about that? So from a legal perspective, if you say that you can terminate it with cause, do you have to itemize every potential cause?
Typically, yeah, with the idea of with cause, is you're going to provide a letter to whoever the agency is saying, hey, we believe that you're in violation of this agreement by A, B, and C, and potentially give them a chance to cure that, depending on, you know, what that necessarily is. Now again, as a reimbursement program, you know, you're looking at, as Councilwoman Requizenberg pointed out, you've already given them the money, and now you've figured out that there's a violation, so it becomes kind of a task to deal with the idea of, you know, whether they violated the agreement, to say, you've done it this way, here's how your chance to correct it is when the money's already been spent and reimbursed to them, other than just give it back.
Just as a point of clarification, Brayden, the charge, the agencies have to make the payments upfront for whatever expenses, and then the city reimburses for what they've already spent, is that correct?
That's correct. So we receive quarterly reports, which we analyze and make sure that they appear to be correct, and then we process a reimbursement. We have in the past had to go back and maybe triple check, or, you know, make sure that what was submitted was accurate and correct, but yes, that's typically how that process would work.
So the, you know, there would be an opportunity to, to check before dispersing funds. I think that, that's, just to clarify that.
I guess my concern, if I can speak a little bit to the, the idea in terms of, before we do the straw poll, my concern is, I agree with you in principle, Grace. I think that there should be a reason, a justifiable reason why we decide that we're no longer going to continue funding it after we've determined that something's happened, whatever that may be. I think the challenge is going to be, is to actually list out everything so that we're sure that we've covered all of our bases, so that we can get the contracts out by that time. So I'm leaning towards actually going with James's suggestion, just because I want to make sure that we have the language right and that the timing works.
James?
Yeah, so just a question, Brayden, if at some point we determined that someone we had this agreement with, we wanted to terminate, would that take an action to council?
My understanding is no.
It is, we have executed the agreement, wouldn't we have to execute an action to terminate it?
If, if I might kind of weigh in, I think on that a little bit, I think the answer to that question is no, and the reason is, I say that the answer is no, is you're approving an agreement that has a clause in it that describes how the termination occurs, and it just is up to staff now to execute what that paragraph talks about in terms of the potential termination of the agreement.
And just to provide some, I apologize, you can, just to provide some context, you know, in terms of the 30-day notice, explaining what the issues are, and I, in the past, when we have had to terminate an agreement, obviously, there's a lead-up to that point of working through what the issue is, trying to ensure that the spirit of the agreement, as well as the letter of the agreement, is being followed. Sometimes that can be very tricky to kind of parse out, especially working with smaller nonprofits that maybe haven't received grant funding before, so, but I, we, myself and my staff always work very diligently to ensure that any agency, you know, is on the right track as, as, as well as possible.
Grace?
Yeah, thank you, Brayden, for that, and I definitely, yeah, appreciate what you're all doing. This was just something that didn't rise to my attention in years past as much as this one, and just think it's a lot, especially when looking at some of our other contracts. To Mary Alice's point and Dave's answer, I didn't hear him say that we need to list all the reasons for cause, and what I've seen in the past from termination clauses that we approve somewhat regularly, we just have for, you know, violation of the terms of this contract, or violation of the terms of their proposal and their program budget. I haven't seen any that specifically list that out, and I didn't hear Dave or anyone else say that we needed to do that.
I'll just also clarify, so when I, so the termination letter that we use, we do list the, the sections of the agreement that are violated in the letter to, to make it clear why the agreement's being terminated.
Grace?
I'm sorry, may I ask one more question to Brayden? Because it sounds like, if I could just clarify, it sounds like in a practical sense, this is what you're already doing, is you are finding cause, you're giving notices, you're working with organizations, and I guess clarification on that, and then if this kind of language change would impact what you're doing, or this is already how you're operating?
I think it's just, again, to protect the, the spirit of the agreement. Again, if perhaps something is done that is not specifically listed, but does certainly violate what the spirit of the agreement is. For example, a news report of the agency having done something, you know, and again, none of these are things that we're anticipating happening, but again, it's just But again, it's just that worst-case scenario of things that have happened in, in the community, and just providing that, that protection for, again, the, the city funds, that they be used for programs that are being operated in good faith, and, and just ensuring that there's a process so that we can protect that. Again, we never want to think that the worst thing's going to happen, but the, the agreement is intended to just protect against that.
Any further discussion? I'm going to abstain from the straw poll, because I'm going to assume this is going to apply to the other two items as well. But if we can do a straw poll of anyone who would be in favor of changing the termination clause, if you would raise your hand. Anyone opposed to changing the termination clause? So it looks like we won't move forward with changing the language at this time. Is there any further discussion, or are we ready for a vote? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. Thank you. Can I get, James?
Yes, now I will move, because there's two items, the rule of thumb is you only omnibus if you have three or more, because it's the same number of votes. So I'm going to move Resolution Number 2024-06-042R, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of Subrecipient Agreement Youth Services Agreement, Urbana-Champaign Independent Media Center IMC Youth Culture Advisors for approval on the regular agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by James, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
Abstain.
That was going to be the next one. Okay. That motion passes. James?
Now I'll move Resolution Number 2024-06-047R, Resolution Approving and Authorizing the Execution of Subrecipient Agreement Community Development Block Grant Agreement, Rape Advocacy Counseling and Education Services, Survivor Services, Trauma Therapy. And that is to council for approval on the regular agenda.
Second.
I think I heard Chandra first, so I'm going to say moved by James, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion on this one? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. And I am abstaining from this vote, and that motion passes. Thank you Brayden, and for the committee for doing all of this really, really important work. All right. Next item on the agenda, we have a whole bunch of staff reports, and the first one is the library budget.
Now mine's on. Want to test yours, too? Hello. Thank you for having us here tonight. My name is Celeste Mutos. I'm the Executive Director of the Urbana Free Library, and tonight I have...
My name is Rachel Fuller. I'm an Associate Director at the Urbana Free Library.
And we are here to come talk with you briefly about the budget that the library board approved at their May meeting. As always, we are grateful for the city for their support. As you know, the library is turning 150 years old this month, so that is 150 years of community support from the city council, from people who've been on the library board, community members, and other donors and supporters of the library. So using the city's baseline increases, here is the budget that the library board approved at their May meeting. This looks familiar to you, because between 80 and 85% of the library's budget tends to be property. We are very property taxed base. This year, it's a little bit lower than the normal 85%, and it's skewing down a little bit because we have some special one-time funds that we anticipate in the budget. We are anticipating a $50,000 state grant from the DCEO grant program that Senator Bennett put in for us some years back. That's now moved forward, so we are in the grant application process for carpeting. There is $100,000. If the city approves that for carpeting and paint for the library, that's included in here as well. We are transferring about $49,000 from a library reserve fund, we put aside for library capital improvements. And then just over $56,000 is ARPA grant funding for a bilingual programming specialist. So these are one-time funds that are changing the proportion of the property tax number. If we look at our expenses in the general fund, you'll notice that the blue segment at the bottom for facilities is over $1 million. Again, we just talked about $200,000 of the funds we just talked about, which was approximately 250. That is going with some other gift money that the library has received into facilities, these capital upgrades. So Rachel's going to talk a little bit more about what those are. What you're seeing with revenue and expenses are our general funds, revenues and expenses.
So, pending city council approval, there will be a continuation of capital expenses improvements, as well as the beginning of some new ones. So in FY '25, the library is working to replace its east air handler unit. That is a significant expenditure.
Do you have any questions pointing that out?
Thank you.
James?
All right. Thank, thank you for the presentation. It's always great to hear from the Urbana Free and Wonderful Library. I just wanted to confirm, for Megan's room and some of these changes, these are the first renovations to these areas since the expansion in...
2004, 2005.
A long time ago.
Yes.
Okay. Because they, they've held up, they've held up pretty well. They've done their time, but I'm glad to see these coming forward. One of my best experiences of public service were the eight years I spent on the Urbana Free Library Board, so, and this, this came about originally at that time, so it's good to see it being well cared for. Thank you.
Any other questions? Grace?
Sorry, I have a question. I was waiting for a motion, but it's just a staff report. I would just throw something out there while I have you here, related to the youth services things, because I like seeing the library application for that. But also what comes to my mind personally is that the library does have this other way to fund programs through the city, through increasing the budget. And I felt very relieved that that pot of youth services increased so much this year, but with very limited funds there. I just wanted to point out, recommend, from my personal standpoint, that the library does have this opportunity to request for the programming and the funds you need through this process, rather than considering some other grant options through the city.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. That was easy. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right. The next staff report on the agenda is the Safer Grant Continuation and Fire Training that the fire department will be speaking to. Chief Dave?
If you can just check and make sure the green lights are on on both of those and pull them nice and close.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you.
Good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to present before you guys tonight to the council, members of the public who are here. Let's see if we can get this pulled up. For those who don't know, Demond Dave, Fire Chief for Urbana Fire Department, and with me tonight is also interim deputy fire chief Clint Whiter. And tonight we'll be presenting UFD's budget request for fiscal year 2025. All right. Now we're ready. In this presentation, we will give you an introduction and background to this request. We will go over two proposals before giving you a summary and conclusion. This budget proposal outlines the financial requirements necessary to maintain and enhance the operational capabilities of, of the Urbana Fire Department. The proposal recommends $546,000 in total funding to support critical initiatives aimed at retaining trained personnel and strengthening our fire training programs. In regards to background, the first factor I want to express in this budget request is that of increasing overtime. We've had significant increase in the total overtime from 2019 to 2022. And in those four years, the overtime budget has increased by $365,000. Another factor to consider is incident growth. Since 2017, we have seen double-digit increases in calls for service to the 238%, and that's depicted by that blue line in the middle of the graph. When you look to the right of that chart, and you follow the dotted red, blue, and green lines, you will see projections for future calls out to 2027. Those projections were made by Urbana's own management analysts and using data from Urbana's record management system. Based off of the current rate of increase, they provided us with three projections, a high, medium, and low. And if the current trends are followed, the high trend sees us in 2027 with an increased amount of service calls of 51%, just under 10,000 calls. If we plateau off and use the medium projection that they give us for 2027, it would see us just at under 8,000 calls, and even with a 10% decrease, they see us at just under 6,000 calls. When you look at the combination of the simultaneous increase in overtime, as well as the incident growth, that led us in 2021 to apply for FEMA's Safer Grant. That grant provides us financial assistance to communities to increase or maintain trained frontline firefighters. And in August of '21, we were awarded a $1.7 million grant, which we used to hire six Safer positions in February of 2022. Yet another factor that we'll look at is that of UFD's annual training expenses. When you look at the training, annual training costs over the last three years since the addition of our Safer positions, we were, we're running just at about $107,000. And that bottom note is just to remind council that during 2022, we were also awarded an AFG grant of $108,000 that helps supplement train. With that, it brings us to our first proposal, and that is the Safer Grant perpetuation. Our recommendation is that council will support the mayor's authorization of a recurring expense of $469,000 to UFD's operational budget to retain five Safer positions, recognizing that the Safer Grant ends in February of 2025. Our second proposal is that to supplement our training budget. Our recommendation here...
Yeah, fade it out for a little bit. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Our recommendation here is that council would support the mayor's approval to augment UFD's training budget with a one-time expense of $77,000 to allow us to continue the 192 hours of mandatory training that's required of all firefighters, specialty training, and training for our new hires. In summary, the budget proposed increase of $546,000 supports mayor and council, mayor and council goals, excuse me, in the number-one area of your strategic plan, which is public safety and well-being. Specifically Strategy 2, which is enhance and expand public safety, and Strategy 2, 3, to promote community well-being. It also supports the Public Safety Review, which was commissioned by the council. In the Phase 1 staffing report that was submitted by Barry Dunn, they expressed that UFD's current staffing model for operational firefighting is at an acceptable minimal level, but yet below the industry standards. They also expressed that our current staffing levels would be necessary to support any prototypes of alternative EMS and emergency response models, which will be recommended in the Phase 2 report of the Public Safety Review. And they also expressed that the city should take steps to encourage, or to ensure any continuous funding of these positions. It also supports the overtime reduction. And here we say approximately, but over 50% of this budget request is offset by overtime reductions. And earlier in the presentation, I spoke of that simultaneous increase of the overtime and calls for service. Here, this chart depicts both. The bar graph on the bottom shows the increase from 2019 through 2022, as well as the line graph above it, which shows the increase for calls for service at the same time. With that, that four-year increase from 19, from 2019 to 2022 was about a $365,000, $366,000 increase over four years. And we hired the Safer Six in February of '22, and after seeing the first full year of impact of the Safer, having the Safer staff, we've seen a $366,000 reduction in overtime in just one year. The, the other red dots that you see plotted on the chart are, are just estimated costs of what overtime would have been without those Safer Six positions. In conclusion, the proposed increase to UFD's budget is critical to sustaining the operational readiness and professional development of our fire department. By investing in personnel retention and training, we aim to fortify our capabilities and continue providing high-quality emergency response services to this community. Both UFD and city administrations appreciate your consideration of this proposal, and we thank you for your attention to this critical funding request. If you guys have any questions?
James?
All right. Thank, thank you for the presentation. If you could give me some more information, why is the training request, the $77,000, why is that a one-time thing? Is that training we're behind on that we need to catch up on? Or, I mean, why wouldn't we need that training in the future?
We will always need that training in the future, but, you know, when we look at the budget for the city, there are several competing requests that we have to consider, and there's dollar amounts. You know, we have a policy on how much reoccurring expense we can actually have, and so these, these requests are also in consideration of all the requests that have to come before you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mary Alice?
So I'm wondering if you can go back to the projected number of calls for service, the green and the blue and the, keep going back. There's a line, graph.
All the way, yep.
Yeah. There we go. Okay.
All right.
Thank you. So I'm wanting to know what variables were used for these approximations, if you are aware. Because our population hasn't grown, right? So I'm trying to figure out...
Well...
How they were modeled.
So I think they were just modeled off of the, the data coming out of our RMS system, meaning the trends that they've seen, especially since COVID. There's been an increase since COVID of people being home and making calls. There's, there's all kinds of factors that have increased that, but the data that was used was derived from our reporting system that we use for the number of calls and the type of calls that we go on.
So because people are more likely to be home since COVID, they're making, they're making calls for service?
Well, there's, there's been an increased awareness in just people making calls for anything, so I can't tell you exactly how they put those numbers together, but I know what data they used. We, we've seen, we've seen an increase of calls. I can give you a breakdown of what type of calls, but we've seen more EMS calls since COVID.
I know that we're going to be doing this ambulance model that we're going to be doing, and so if we, and for the time being, right, the idea was that both the fire department and the ambulance would still go out, just like we've been doing, except we have a dedicated bus in our system, right? But hopefully, as time progresses, we might see some situations where EMS solely goes to the call without fire.
It, it is possible. It is possible.
It's possible.
It's possible.
I'm hoping for the green or the blue line and not the red line, I'm just coming up, okay. Then, as I was looking at the fire budget, you were talking about how the SAFER grant has decreased our overtime expenses. So, really, we're looking at, if we look at fire operations, that's the piece, right, where you have the five SAFER people, but the decrease in overtime.
Yes.
So, if we look at fiscal year 2022, it should have a really high number of overtime, about 800,000. That was 7.8, okay? And so, the proposed for this fiscal year 2025, three years later, is eight. So, it's increased by about a little less than $200,000.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, just wanted to make sure I read that clearly, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other questions? Grace?
I was wondering if you could go back to one of the last graph, I think, that shows overtime and calls for service. I really love that, I was trying to make sense of the overtime cost and the calls here. And if I may ask about 2020 and 2021, we had actually less calls for service than 2019, but higher overtime. I didn't know if you could share some insight into that?
I think some of it has to just do with staffing levels. One of the biggest decreases that we've seen was a significant decrease in workers' comp claims. With that, during that time, you know, when you have a lot of overtime like that, you have an increased volume of incidents that you're responding to with less people. And so, that means our employees are going on more calls, the opportunity for more strains and strains and different things like that. And so, with the SAFER six, it decreased the number of incidents that individuals have to lift and different things like that. And so, it correlates with that.
Thank you. And then, those floating dots in '23 and '24, is that what you're saying would be overtime without the SAFER employees?
That is the estimated overtime cost without the SAFER staff.
Okay, thank you. And I would also just echo Mary Alice's point on hoping that the new arrangement with the ambulance helps reduce some of these medical calls for fire, so y'all can focus on fire-related and other medical things that you're trained to deal with.
So, just an understanding, there's going to be times where some calls, the way that they're coded, we will not go on. So, we might see a small decrease in the amount of calls. But the way that the whole system is set up, we're still going to respond, but the impact is to our public. They will wait, they will have a less time that they wait for ambulance, the time they wait for an ambulance to respond will be greatly reduced because we have two committed ambulances to our citizens. And currently, that's not the model that we have. So, if you have a family member or someone who has a stroke, you understand that getting to the hospital is of the utmost importance. And when you have delayed response times of eight to 12 minutes for an ambulance and sometimes longer, it's not about the reduced number of calls, but the increased service to our citizens. So, we will see a slight decrease, we hope to see a slight decrease in certain types of calls that we go on. But the bigger impact is the increase that our citizens will receive for emergency care.
Thank you, yes, definitely valuable. And then, when you're assisting with those calls, are you doing anything when the ambulance is there? Like, my understanding is you have some more advanced training or equipment if needed, but the ones that don't require that, where you're still accompanying the ambulance, are you all just kind of on standby or are you interacting in that situation still?
Yeah, we still interact. When we go on those type of calls, the ambulance is staffed with one advanced medic and one EMT, a basic medic. A lot of EMS calls require advanced-level care, where you need two advanced medics. And we also respond with paramedics, advanced medics, and EMTs on our crews. So, sometimes, once the ambulance arrives and depending on what care the patient needs, our members travel with the ambulance en route to the hospital, providing that ALS care, that requires two advanced medics to be able to provide.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, we will keep moving along. The next staff report is IT staffing increase and software upgrades from the executive committee, not committee, department.
Close enough there? Better? Hi, I'm Thomas Webb, I'm the IT manager for the city of Urbana, and I've got two changes to my budget for this year that I wanted to give you all more information on. The first is some software upgrades we're looking to do. It's $71,250. We're looking to move to Microsoft 365 as our service provider for email. We already use Outlook email, but we host it onsite. 365 lets us do that in the cloud. It also increases our ability to support flexible work and access better collaboration tools. As some of you may or may not have experienced, you know, emailing back and forth documents with multiple copies of documents with all redactions and changes and all of that is very challenging and consumes a lot of city time. Being able to use more collaboration tools will reduce some of that overhead. It also increases some security and resiliency by having stuff in the cloud versus in our onsite data center that is, you know, water pipe breaks or something. We have all the data backed up, but it might still be days before we can rebuild the server or whatever. So, having more of our stuff available in the cloud increases resiliency and disaster recovery, those sorts of things. So, that's the software upgrade piece. And the other piece is a new IT staff position, which comes in at $104,000. And this would be someone in the computer systems technician role. We currently have one person reporting to me in that role, this would make it two. It just allows us to adjust for supporting workloads as time has gone on, more and more of what we do is technology-based and the needs of the IT staff to support everyone's computers and iPads and, you know, body cam stuff for the police department and all of these different things increase staff time and overhead. So, it'll also allow us to change how we distribute workload a little bit. Right now, we have three IT staff members dedicated to support, one that does desktop support, one that kind of hovers between desktop and backend networking, and then one solely dedicated mostly to the backend networking stuff. By adding someone else at the desktop support level, we can increase our, both our support there, but also free up that person who's kind of floating between to do some more of the backend work as well, so. That's it.
Thank you, and I don't think we've seen you present, so, or many of us haven't, so.
Thank you.
James?
Thank you, thank you for that presentation. I do have a question about the Office 365. Earlier when we talked about cloud options for technology, one of the concerns was the CGIS requirements with regard to like chain of evidence, police data. Are we at a point where Microsoft is now trusted to handle that for us in a cloud operation? Because that's where it's always been kind of sticky before.
Sure, so the bulk of CGIS data won't actually be, we won't be using Microsoft services for that. We, our use of Tyler and some of the other tools are the majority of our CGIS data. We will be using Microsoft's government cloud infrastructure versus the public cloud, which does comply with a lot of the CGIS requirements for things, especially for things like the, you know, email, where things are going back and forth in email that might contain information of a criminal justice nature, and that is covered under their government cloud layer, so.
All right, and then a second question is, did we have someone that was like part-time serving in an IT role that this position's going to kind of subsume or?
We don't, we currently have a apprentice that's out of a Parkland College program that works part-time. That program would not go away, it's partially funded by grant, work-study grant. So, we would look to, we would still keep that training piece in place, this would be a wholly new position.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice?
So, I'm just trying to construct your kind of flowchart here. So, you have, currently you have two desktop support people, is that fair to say?
We have like one and a half. We have one person who's purely desktop support, one person who's like half networking, half desktop, and then one full networking. So, yeah, it's like 1.5.
Who supports the different systems, like the financial system and so forth?
So, it's a mix. It depends on what exactly is wrong with it. It's a cloud-based system, so the vendor takes some of that for stuff that is our responsibility. Mostly falls to our networking person, who also is responsible for that cloud connection for like authentication and pieces like that. So, we had an issue right after I started where authentication wasn't working, and it was a change that we had to back out on our end, and it was our network admin that had to do that. But when someone has an issue with getting, like logging into the system for the first time, things like that, that's our desktop support person. So, it really depends on exactly what kind of support we're looking to do.
So, if this position is approved, would it be fair to say that you have two full-time desktop support people and one full-time network support person? Is that fair?
It would be two and two, so I'd have two-
It'd be two and two.
Two and two. So, the person who's currently one-half would go more towards the networking side-
Right.
And this person would-
But you already had another one, gotcha.
Right, yeah.
Okay, so you one-
So, yeah, I'm at three with one half and half and one, and then, yeah.
I gotcha, okay, all right, thank you.
Grace?
I just had some clarifying questions that go along that train of thought that Mary Alice was on, I think. I was looking at page 206 of the budget and the IT staffing-funded positions, and so you said that computer tech apprentice is grant-funded, and so I see it's zero dollars, but the position there because it's grant-funded, I imagine. And then, I see the computer systems tech goes from one to two, and that's this one additional position?
That was, right, this additional position.
And then, as far as network stuff, Mary Alice's question, it says, at least in here, there's one network systems tech and then one network administrator, so those are the two network people.
Right, the network systems tech is currently splitting time between desktop support and the, more of the network-level stuff. So, that person would be able to devote more time to the network to help the network administrator, and then that's where the split would come in.
Okay, and then, I see the business analyst temporary one decreasing from .6 to .3. I didn't know if you had anything to share on that.
So, we got approval in the last budget cycle for a full-time business analyst instead of the .6, and the .3 for this upcoming fiscal year is just to make sure that we're in the process of hiring that position, and that .3 is to keep the part-time person on for half of the year to have overlap so they can help train in the full-time replacement before that falls off.
Okay, because business analyst has just one this year and last year, right? But is that position vacant currently?
The full-time position is currently vacant.
Okay, I see.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mary Alice?
So, I'm just gonna, Grace and I are just going to go back and forth here. So, based on what you just said, that that means that next year, if you don't ask for any additional positions, your FTE count will be six, because the .3 will go away. Is that correct?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay, so, okay, so we've got, right now, we have 5.6, you're asking for 6.3, but that .3 is temporary.
That .3 is temporary, so it would go down to six, correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Cool.
We will keep marching along, next one is VERF funding.
Good evening, I'm Kyle Capper, interim financial analyst for the city. Appreciate your time and attention this evening. I'm here to talk about VERF, which is the fund the city uses to replace existing vehicles and equipment. I'm going to provide just a quick refresher, it's been a little while since it was talked about in general to you, and then touch on a few overall economic factors and how they've been affecting the planning for the replacement of those equipment and vehicles. So, as a quick refresher, departments, individual departments contribute funds into the VERF to basically plan for the replacement of the equipment and vehicles that they already have. This allows, this avoids individual departments from having large fluctuations, having to make those large purchases within their operational budgets. The VERF currently has about 900 assets, they're worth a little over $100 million in total, and you can see the breakout of the contributions by department in the pie chart on this slide. So, to qualify to be an asset that's funded by the VERF or planned for within the VERF, an asset has to be worth approximately $5,000 or more, have an estimated useful life of five years or more. The intent of the fund is to replace like with like, so it's not an opportunity to upgrade. This is intended to basically let city staff continue to do their jobs without having to worry about the equipment or vehicle being there to do so. If a department wants upgrades, that's what things like budget requests and amendments are for. And just a quick note, the final circle over there to the right, we always do account for historically standard inflation, so we usually, when we're anticipating the replacement cost for a given piece or given asset, we usually assume 2% of inflation. You can probably guess where this is going, but that's what we've always assumed in the The, a couple of points on the policies before we come back to inflation. We currently fund at 85% of the assets, with the idea being that we're not going to have to replace all vehicles and equipment across the city all at once, so we fund for 85% of the total. Individual departments do not own these line items, they're funding into a plan to replace them, so the idea is not that if you're able to purchase something for less than you anticipated, then you can purchase something for more on a different item. It's intended, they're line-item-specific replacement plans. And as I mentioned, the idea is to just let city employees do their jobs, it's not, the purpose of the VERF is not to upgrade our equipment. As we all know, inflation over the past few years has been anything but historically standard. The chart on the slide here is from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it indicates that new vehicle prices increased almost 20% from January 21 to January 24. What this means is we have budgeted the replacement costs for the existing equipment and vehicles using standard inflation, and those prices to actually replace those assets is going to be far greater. That's creating a budget gap. If we leave that unmitigated in order to actually replace the assets, we'll either, departments would either have to request through amendments additional funding or dip into their own operational budgets to replace just their existing assets, which is counter to the entire point of the VERF. So, our proposal is to increase recurring contributions, those annual contributions from the individual departments, citywide of 15.5%. We believe that's the most equitable approach, to use a blanket adjustment, and also to apply a one-time catch-up contribution so that all the assets that are currently on pace to be replaced, all the contributions they've made in the past will keep them on schedule to be replaced, as was originally intended, if that makes sense. And what that means in real dollars is an increase of about $300,000 to the annual contributions, and a one-time contribution for that catch-up of 1.95 million. There will also be, on the recurring side, a subsequent 150 in the next fiscal year to make it true, to truly catch up to where inflation has been. And obviously, the final bullet kind of goes without saying, just keep tabs on where asset values are going, where- where inflation is going, so that significant adjustments like this are not necessary in the future. Any questions?
Any questions? Mary Alice?
All right, so if I summarize here what we're saying, there's two things that are going on. One, that individual departments who contribute to the VERF funding are gonna be billed at a higher percentage so that they can catch up. But two, we're gonna augment that fund with almost $2 million, so they don't have to catch up fully. Is that correct?
Yes. The one-time contribution is not going to be billed to the individual departments, but yes, the annual contributions would go up 15.5%. Yes.
Okay. So is it coming out of the general fund? Is the 1.95 one-time contribution coming out of the general fund?
Uh, yes. Yeah.
Okay. And so we would see, I guess the consequence here is, because you said 300,000 is gonna be increased overall for all the individual-level accounts, that would explain why each department's gonna have a higher amount in their VERF, even if they don't put in more cars, for example. So let's say Community Development still has 10 cars. They're not increasing 10 cars, but now they're contributing 250,000 instead of 210,000.
Yeah, so the idea, what we're not, we're not talking about additions to the VERF here. Those are within the individual departments' budgets. This is just for what's already in the VERF. Basically, those assets that are already in there and already being funded are gonna cost more. So either we can plan for it now and increase the rates, or they're gonna have to dip into it. They're gonna, it's gonna cost them more to replace those assets one way or another. This is just trying to get ahead of it and plan for it.
I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, as I look at the budget, okay, the 1.95, fine. That's, that's a general fund. But each individual department that contributes to the VERF has a line item in the budget, right? And that's, line item's going to increase regardless if they're, if they're not gonna increase the number of vehicles they're adding to the VERF, that line item in that particular budget will increase now because of these anticipated costs.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's due to the replacement costs for those assets.
Right, right, right. I just wanted to be clear as we look through the budget. I understood what was going on. Thank you.
James?
Okay, now you've confused me a little bit. Is, is that what is captured in the 300,000 of recurring increase? That's across all of the department?
That's across the entire VERF.
Okay, thank you.
Grace?
I'll stick with that same line of thoughts here of the one-time catch-up costs. Will we need to increase the reoccurring costs in the near future? I mean, if we expect inflation and things to keep increasing, wouldn't we expect the reoccurring costs to be upped eventually?
So as I mentioned, there will be a subsequent 150. So the entire increase for recurring costs to fully catch up on the annual contributions is 450. Looking at priorities across the city, we opted to propose 300 of it this year, and then there will be another 150 requests to recurring in a subsequent fiscal year. And then, the answer is yes, we'll keep monitoring inflation. But since we've been keeping it at 2% for several years while inflation has been anywhere but that, that's why this is a more significant increase.
And so you're saying we do need 450 total in reoccurring, but you're proposing just 300 this year and then an additional 150 the following year? For that 450 total?
I'm not proposing the 150 right now, but yes, that will be necessary.
But that's the plan. And that's because there's not enough in this current budget? Or could you explain more why?
This is balancing the needs, other needs within departments that wanting to definitely give due to the VERF, so we're planning ahead, but understanding that there's competing priorities.
Okay. And so you said in your slide that the VERF fundamentals are over a five-year estimated useful life, which I definitely see on page 207 of the VERF schedule budget here. But except for the police squad cars are only three-year life. And do we really replace those with a brand-new 52,000 car every three years?
Uh, yes. The answer is yes.
And is that based on any sort of best practice or mileage hit? And it's also, also if you don't know, that's fine. It can be an answer for other presenters.
I, I'm gonna take a shot at that. Those cars are driven almost constantly, like they're in use 24 hours a day. And I think three years is the appropriate schedule, given the heavy use.
Okay. And again, if it could be, you know, based on anything, what miles they usually hit, or anything else kind of verifiable, that would be helpful.
I think another factor there is that they have, so we can't, we can't allow those vehicles to not be in good repair. They, they have to be ready to go at a moment's notice when they're needed.
Just asking for a little more information. I'm just hearing a lot of opinions and the need to be in good order, and it might help to verify some of the use, the mileage, the conditions that lead to that three-year replacement cycle.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
All right. Next, we have housing slash code inspector from Community Development. We've got Carol Mitten.
Good evening. I will be presenting the request for an additional housing code inspector. And I wanted to just lead with a little bit of context, which I found interesting, just about the rental registration program and the volume of properties that are involved in it. So the rental registration program started in 2007. And the goal that was expressed at the time the program began was to inspect the properties every three to five years. And at present, we have almost 2,600 rentals overall, rental properties, and those contain over 10,000 individual units. So right now, we have two inspectors, and they complete, they have completed in the last two years, 2022, 2023, together, they have an average, annual average of 482 systematic inspections. That's where we go through the rental properties on a schedule. So each inspector performs approximately 200 to 250 systematic inspections annually. And that does not include inspections that are triggered by a complaint from a tenant. So those are just on the regular schedule. So that's, that adds to their work. And then, the number of inspections they can perform is also influenced, not just by the responding to complaints, but also by the number of re-inspections that are caused by those systematic inspections. So to go back an average of three times, just to follow up, those inspections don't take as long. But it's, it's a lot of work when you put it all together. So then, just to summarize, the proposal is to have one additional housing code inspector, and that has a cost of 121,500 on a recurring basis, and then a $50,000 one-time expense for a vehicle for that person. And then, right now, the, the properties are inspected, the systematic inspections happen on an average of six and a half years between inspections. And so with an additional inspector, this would improve to every 4.3 years. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any, Mary Alice?
I don't have to go first every time.
You're fast.
Okay, so I thought we had three code inspectors. I thought we had two plus a supervisor who also did code inspections.
Yes, I'm not, these are the people that do the systematic inspections that I'm referring to when I talk about the two that we have.
And so when I look at the budget, I have code compliance in rental housing, and it looks like the proposal is within rental housing and not code compliance.
I think that's correct. Is that right, Elizabeth? Yes.
Okay, so when we're talking about rental housing, it is with the code compliance, basically. It's just in a different activity account, I guess. Is that, that's what's going on here?
Yes, I'm getting a head nod from Elizabeth, yes.
I see that. Okay, so you said that we had 10,000 units, is that right? And how many properties?
It's, it's 10,000 individual apartment units.
Right. And 2,500 rentals.
Yes.
And they can go through 200 to 250 a year.
Yes. And so sometimes those are just a single-family home, and sometimes that's an apartment building with, you know, a dozen units. It, it just runs the game.
Sure, sure. And if, I'm just gonna do the law of averages here. That means if you had one person doing this, right, for two, that would be 10 years it would take for them to get through.
I think that's about right.
That's right. Okay. So if you have two people, it takes them five years to get through.
Well, it's six and a half, it's the, it's six and a half years right now with two people is the cycle.
Okay.
And then we would improve that to 4.3 years with three people.
So how do we get from 6.5 to 4.3?
I can, I can send you the math that Nick did for me.
That would be awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Grace?
Could you clarify on the reoccurring costs? That includes salary and benefits and all the, all, that's the whole package here?
The whole package. It's the salary and the benefits, and it's everything.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any of who hasn't spoken yet? Sharice?
I guess the question I have is regarding a code inspector. They, I'm assuming that there's a lot of professional development that they may have to have, so they'll understand the codes and, and...
Yes, they have certifications that they have to, to get in order to do the work. And then they have to maintain those certifications.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that, 'cause I was, I don't know, the salary? And it's like, it seems like it must be a specialty area on some level.
Yes.
Okay.
Mary Alice?
So when the rental registration came into being, there was a couple of rationales for that. One of them, I mean, is the cost, right? So each landlord has to pay an amount every year in order to be compliant with that ordinance.
Yes.
And I thought that one of the reasons for that monetary amount was to cover the people who would do the inspections. Now, I'm not advocating that we raise that amount, but rather what I would like to understand is, out of the rental registration fees that we collect, what proportion is covered by the housing inspectors?
Get that.
Thank you.
Grace?
Just a question about the vehicle, then. Would that be in the VERF for future replacement schedule?
If it's fun, if it, if you choose to fund it here, then it would go into the VERF, yes.
And that would be a replacement of, estimated about equal 50,000 for, at the end of the life?
It would be a new vehicle here, and then it would be put in the VERF for future replacement in kind.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And final staff report, police staffing and hiring incentives.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Police Chief Larry Boone. To my left is Deputy Chief Searls. We're gonna be presenting to you tonight FY '25. And I'll start with budget request overview. Last year, this time, I met with all of you with the possibility of becoming your police chief. During that time, you were very clear that you desired something different in a police department, as well as a police chief. During that time, or should I say during that, those visits, it was clear to me that the police department was not properly positioned with respect to manpower, technology, and community engagement. The Barry Dunn report has only strengthened that position. Now, the mayor said last week that she witnessed six different police chiefs request additional officers. We shouldn't take the word of police chiefs very lightly. In most cases, they have 20 years' experience to be chief. So collectively, you're looking at over 100 years of police experience, all voicing the same concerns. So I'll start with my first request. As you see, the PowerPoint slide has two distinct lines breaking into three separate groups. As you know, the police department, there are three separate branches of oversight. Operations, the Criminal Investigative Division, Administrative Services. As I stated earlier, in most departments, there's a deputy chief for each branch, or its equivalent, that manages the division. Currently, there is an interim deputy chief overseeing operations, and there is a deputy chief that's been tasked with managing both criminal investigations as well as administrative services. I want to say again, this is not an ideal structure. But for now, we will, we'll deal with it and revisit it in the future. Therefore, I am requesting kindly an additional deputy chief to oversee operations. Now, I want to speak to the training sergeant. There is no other position more important than the first-line supervisor. They are responsible for shaping the future leaders and must simply have the time to do that. Currently, UPD's first-line supervisors are tasked with multiple obligations surrounding training and administrative duties, as well as answering calls for service. Now, I can tell you from my experience, if you're doing all that, you're not doing a whole lot of leading. They aren't afforded an opportunity to walk in their authority. Walking in your authority means something in the Department of Police. It means that you're valued internally, externally, and that the women and men that report to you see you as a leader. Now, I have no doubt that is being done here. But the structure needs to be changed to afford them to be the best that they can be. Therefore, I'm requesting a training sergeant to provide guidance and to provide support on various training activities, to develop and manage training schedules, to oversee administration, administrative training materials, and to coordinate training events, and to conduct research on best practices and policies. All right. Request number two. This is something that I embrace. Let me just be on the record with that. To lighten the workload of patrol officers, I am requesting two community service responders. The Barry Dunn report suggested six non-sworn civilians. Again, I recognize that that can't be done in one fiscal year. I envision those individuals handling those calls for service that don't require sworn personnel. That concept is not new to me. I've been familiar with that concept since 2010. So it's not new to me. Additionally, I am requesting one social worker in support of alternative response models. Request number three. I am requesting three community engagement officers who will work in partnership with our community members of Urbana to enhance the quality of life in our community for all that live, work, and play in Urbana. I have over 30 years of experience in this regard. I purposely sent you all an email highlighting some of my successes from IACP, the International Association of Chiefs of Police, today regarding such. Dr. Cunningham and Sergeant McKinney will speak about that further later tonight.
Apparently, I didn't keep up on the slides very well. Just reiterating some of the things that the chief discussed, the second deputy chief would be a backfill. In other words, we would take existing staff, promote to deputy chief permanently, and then the officer that would be hired would actually backfill that position as a patrol officer. The same is true of the training sergeant. We would take existing staff, make a promotion, and then backfill as a patrol officer. And then, as the chief discussed, an additional three patrol officers as part of this additional request.
So, again, the Barry Dunn report suggested seven more sworn officers and six additional, or should I say, six non-sworn responders. Again, this recommendation where, will merely put us at minimum staffing to address current workloads. The current model we are currently in simply does not afford us operational flexibility. I'm going to expound on that. When there's an increase in crime, we're at the mercy of said criminals. We don't have the wherewithal to strategically address it as it, as it is happening. I know this because we're keeping data now. And the data suggests to us that things are continuing to happen because we don't have the resources to address it. Number one. Number two, when officers take time off, whether it's vacation or sick leave, it creates an influx in operation efficiency, meaning we don't have enough officers to patrol the streets, just one officer. You can't call yourself efficient if one officer decides not to come to work. We shouldn't have to operate that way. Number three, critical incidents. We are at the mercy of criminals during a criminal or critical incident. I'm going to tell you about a story. Two weeks ago, I went out on the street, brand-new officer, with, uh, one of the officers here. And there was a call for service regarding two individuals masked, wearing hoodies, with handguns. Naturally, everybody responded to that because there's two individuals with handguns. We came across citizens that said they went that way. That requires coordination. You can't coordinate a whole lot with just two or three officers. Fortunately, I was there. I did what I could do, but, you know, these officers are well-trained. And I was amazed at how they executed the search of the area. But critical calls are very fluent. It doesn't stop there. So here's the other part of that. Now, it's been reported that shots are fired just down the street, so we all respond to that. Now, we recover shell casing. Again, it's four of us, maybe five at the most. You got to stop traffic. Oh, let me back up. I forgot something. While we are responding to the shots fired, we conduct a felony stop. A felony stop is you, you've been, uh, provided information that says this car is possibly involved in this shooting. One of the sergeants on scene conducted a felony stop. The officers were very professional. They stopped traffic just in case shooting's starting to occur. But not only that, you got to make the scene safe, and you can't approach the car by yourself, okay? Nothing about police work says you got to, you know, do these things one-on-one. It requires two to three officers to approach the car. Fortunately, we were able to clear that call. The next call, I'm talking about a series of ten minutes. The next call was shots fired. We go to that location, we recover casings. Now, you got to go door-to-door to ensure nobody's been hit, right? You got to stop traffic just in case whoever that individual was with said gun and decided to shoot said gun decides to come back. Number three, you got to preserve the area in which you are recovering the gun, I mean, the weapon, the shell casings. Number four, you got to call K-9 to do a track of where the suspect was last seen according to the citizens. Number five, you have to mark the casings where they were, um, found as you are strategically searching through a grid process to neighborhood. Naturally, you got to control pedestrian traffic because they're going to want to know what's going on. So as I'm looking at all this going on in a series of ten to fifteen minutes, you've got three calls, all surrounding one call that's somewhat connected regarding gun violence. I'm hearing other calls, and I'm looking around. Hearing other calls, go out for service. That is what I mean, that we are not structured with flexibility. We are handicapped. We are on our heels. We have no affordability to be progressive or preventative. Lastly, one officer, just one officer not being available to handle calls for service. What am I going to do if I have to suspend an officer? Not suspend him because we don't have enough cars to answer calls for service? Surely, you wouldn't want me, whether an officer that is facing discipline, to be working the streets. Folks, it's more about policing other than calls for service. Policing is very dynamic. It has many tentacles that reaches far and long. Next.
So as Chief Boone discussed, Barry Dunn's recommendations indicate that twenty-two, approximately twenty-two percent more staffing is needed to address current volume in addition to the chief's recommendation, both pre and post-arrival, which his analysis included both staffing models and department reorganization. Those two data points are similar recommendations, the addition of additional staffing, but each taken into account different metrics. It's our determination that those two independent, um, reviews of the situation brings a high confidence that the Urbana Police Department needs to start adding staff. We're proposing a multi-year process with ongoing evaluation to the addition of staff, and we've already begun changing what we can with respect to operational procedures, specifically moving our second watch shift, which is three PM to three AM, to an eleven AM to eleven PM shift based on Barry Dunn's analysis of our, uh, call volume in that the call volume has shifted from that three-to-three period to earlier in the day from an eleven-to-eleven period at our peak, uh, call volume.
So shortly after George Floyd, I was captured saying that I embraced defunding the police. Now, I didn't say that, okay? But what I did say was, you know, there are calls for service that we should not be sending guns and badges to, such as those going through a mental psychosis. And the reporter took delivery and, and reported that I said something different, but I didn't. So in recent years, several police departments, right after Ferguson's, began to shift away from dispatching armed officers to certain types of calls for issues. Some promises, alternative responses models have emerged. These strategies are aimed to better align residents' needs as well as department needs with non-police professionals who are trained and resourced to address concerns. Again, the addition of two non-sworn, reoccurring community service responders. This alternative response model will afford non-sworn personnel who respond to non-emergent community issues and needs such as traffic collision, vandalism, special events, report-taking, et cetera. They are typically unarmed, and unlike police officers, they have no powers of arrest. Now, I caution you about this model because as I just described them, I can tell you from some experience, the first time one of these individuals are threatened, they don't want to do it anymore. So think about that as we work through these alternative response models with respect to, um, service responders. The other request, again, one social worker with considerable experience. We want folks that, um, are comfortable in those spaces when they go check on the well-being of someone going, going through a mental psychosis to be very comfortable in that environment. You don't want someone that are, that's never experienced that because, again, you'll, you'll be hitting the reset button over and over and over again. Uh, these practitioners either accompany officers, which I've seen work, or respond in lieu of them, using their professional background to stabilize individuals in crisis and connect them with appropriate support and services to address underlying issues. Now, our current model is made up of one behavioral health detective who is no longer with us. She's, uh, in the detective visi, division now. And a clinician employed through Rosecrance, um, but it's embedded within the police department. Most of my experience with these models, these models tend to be embedded within the police department, but I know there's an appetite for something different. I embrace whatever you guys want to do with respect to that.
In contemplating the civilian staffing with a non-sworn civilian responder, the, the request for two community service responders is going to involve a process, a process of developing the program. We're going to have to develop a scope of responsibilities. We assume that it's going to focus on things such as quality of life and code enforcement-type calls. In order for us to properly deploy this program, we're going to have to develop a training program, a program that we do not have. We're going to have to develop one. We're going to have to advertise the position, hire talent, acquire equipment, and then provide actual training and outfit that personnel for deployment to the field. This is something that we are absolutely, um, willing to do and undertake, but please understand this is not a small task, um, that, um, that we are considering.
So the addition of a social worker will be a reoccurring cost with the ability to manage live-action calls for service. Our current model is follow-up only. Additionally, based on data, there needs to be a nexus to services surrounding domestic violence, which is a large driver of Urbana's Part One crimes. Also, this social worker will, will explore opportunities to provide services by those affected by other social ills, such as those highlighted on the PowerPoint. But again, further discussion is required based on the appetite of council as to how we want that model to look like.
The three community engagement officers are, are going to, um, be the, the tip of the spear with respect to developing the scope and responsibility and programming for this Office of Community Relations and for those positions. We're going to select officers, if these officers are approved, um, from existing talent at the police department. It is important that we utilize experienced officers, officers that have, um, good experience on the street or in the Investigations Division and already have some, um, connections with the community. It is, it's, it's, it would not be prudent to take a brand-new officer and put them in this position. Our anticipation is that we would have a community engagement office, an actual structure in South Urbana, and that office would house the community service responders, the civilians, the community engagement officers, the chaplains, and the training sergeant.
That location was selected based on our data. Everything we do is going to be driven by data. The data says that Part One and Part Two types of crimes are heavily influencing that region of the city. So our current hiring incentive program is, has been in existence since twenty-twenty-two with a final payment scheduled for quarter one of twenty-twenty-five. And I, I won't belabor the issue. You guys all know that maintaining and recruiting what you currently have is vitally important. So I think it's, uh, it's coming upon us to do as much as we can to maintain what we have with addition to adding further.
We anticipate that our, if approved, hiring incentives would be for new and experienced officer hires and for the referral incentives that would be available to all city employees as our city employees are our best recruiters. Please note the difference between what we're suggesting here in this budget and the previous incentive program is there's not a retention component of this particular program. This is just hiring and referrals.
So in closing, uh, police hiring is a challenge across the nation. The difficulty in recruiting law enforcement officers is not due to one particular cause, rather multiple, multiple social issues, political, economic forces are all going in play at the same time, shaping the current state of recruitment and retention affairs. Here's the bottom line, folks. If agencies are unable to recruit, retain what they have, we're going to be severely handicapped as I highlighted, uh, that particular incident that occurred just the other night. I think I'll stop right there.
At this point, we're going to ask Dr. LaShonda Cunningham and Sergeant Matt McKinney to join us.
Good evening.
Hi. Want to start? Okay, uh, my name's Matthew McKinney. I'm a patrol sergeant for the Urbana Police Department. I think I know most of you, or at least have said hello in the hallways and crossing. Mayor Marlin, council members, thanks for the opportunity. Uh, I appreciate the, uh, the ability for you guys to hear us out. And I think this is a good opportunity for, for us to share some of our experiences and kind of where we think community engagement should be, uh, as a role in the Urbana Police Department. So, uh, if you, you see on the slides, um, the goal of community engagement is pretty simple. It's, it's building trust and engaging with the community. We want to use, utilize community organizations and continue to kind of help meet the needs that the Urbana Police Department faces and what we can, uh, do to help the citizens of Urbana. And essentially, that's the major role that community engagement can play, and a dedicated team is, uh, is important in that aspect. Uh, these next three slides are just going to kind of run through, um, how calls for service happen and how we kind of envision what community engagement role can play, um, as a dedicated unit or, um, putting more of an emphasis on community engagement. So typically, we get called to a scene, and that's a call and a request from a citizen. Someone in Urbana is having an emergency. Somebody's in crisis. Something is going on that has, you know, required them to call for help. There are calls that we initiate on our own, but the majority of our calls are calls for service, and that's somebody thought it was important enough that they needed the police to be there. Um, I, I take a lot of pride in knowing that people are calling and looking for us. Uh, I'm disappointed when I hear that people don't feel like they can. Uh, our, our goal as police officers, as your Urbana Police Department, is equitable service. And if, if we don't have that happening right now, that's a problem, in my opinion. I think we should be working towards that goal. Uh, this is kind of where that comes into effect. Once we're on scene, okay, um, once we're on scene, we, um, we evaluate everything we see. We look at the totality of the circumstances. We try and evaluate whether a crime has been committed, whether there's enforcement action to be taken, or whether or not there's enforcement action to be taken. If, if there is no enforcement action to be taken, then we move to the next step. And the next step is usually trying to facilitate services to someone. We don't always have that option. Sometimes calls for service are stacking. As a, as a patrol sergeant, I know too well, there's times where I have four and five calls holding during day shift where I'm having to be concerned about making sure the next emergency is stopping before I can worry about facilitating help to, um, the external, you know, non-crime-related issues that our citizens are dealing with. Uh, our focus should be both. We should be able to focus on stopping crime, but also being able to help the citizens that we're dealing with. I'm going to let LaShonda talk about it a little bit, but, um, a lot of our horizons were broadened on this when we went to, uh, a conference that was focused on, uh, community engagement. So, LaShonda, do you want to?
Yeah, so Sergeant McKinney and I had an opportunity to attend a community engagement, uh, conference in Atlanta. And the founder and facilitator for that conference was Reverend, uh, Markell Hutchins, uh, for Moving Forward. He's over the organization Moving Forward. And initially, um, Reverend Hutchins found himself, uh, trying to seek ways to unify with police enforcement, law enforcement. And through partnership, through... law enforcement, and through partnership, through education, through going into these community spaces with law enforcement to gain a better understanding of how law enforcement can work with the community. And at this conference, there were over 1,700 individuals from various police agencies from all over the world. And for myself and Sergeant McKinney, being in some of these seminars with a lot of these individuals from different agencies, I will tell you that I was appalled to know that in the city of Urbana, we are so far behind community policing and the way we do things here in our community. Other agencies are already doing it. Community policing, community engagement team, going into these spaces, trying to build and unify the trust that the community has, has not seen in a long time. I recognize, we recognize, this doesn't change what has happened across the nation, and you're hearing it firsthand from an African-American woman. And I will tell you that through observation, through counsel, through our community, I will tell you from my perspective, I've been in low-income housing. I have lived every single situation scenario that you can fathom. And for me to sit here and listen to people talk about Black and Brown communities, some of you I haven't even broke bread with. I haven't even, and even my own councilwoman in my own ward, to speak for me, you don't speak for me. And what I will tell you is that being on this side, I've been on both sides. I've been an elected official. I've been in your position. I have sat on different councils, organizations, boards. Google me, and you can see the track record for yourself. But what I will say is, is that I am saying to you, counsel, all of you, we have to move forward. We have to figure out how to get past the hurt and pain that has contributed, contributed in our community. We have to stand together to figure this out. We're not saying that we are taking away services that are already being provided in our community, but what we are saying is, and I will tell you firsthand, being the services supervisor, being in the office and listening to these calls day in and day out, listening to crisis, mental health, domestic, when we have to take kids into protective custody because there's been a domestic. When I tell you that our first responders on the scene are our officers, when they don't have time to pick up a phone and call some of these agencies all throughout the afternoon or in the late hours, I will tell you, I have been here till 11:30 to midnight some nights, caring for someone else's kid, making phone calls to some of these agencies to see if someone can take them homeless. Can someone intake them for the night? And I will tell you, either sometimes they can, and sometimes whoever's on call does not return a call. I will tell you that we've waited hours with kids for DCFS to come to the office just to take them to someone who can take them in for the night. We have fed these kids. We have called Courage Connections and tried to connect them with services. And to go to another state to meet other partners and constituents who are already doing this work, it is embarrassing. And at first, I had to do my own research about what this all meant. I had to see it for myself. And instead of me sitting out here, listening to people in my ear telling me what decision to make and how to make it, what to say, when to say it, and then we sit here and we attack each other instead of listening to each other, trying to identify ways to work together, we sit here and we attack each other. People who are here are doing some great work. And you know what? I'm sorry that it has to come to this, but for me, I asked to come here tonight to say this. Whether you want addition, it takes officers to help do this work. It takes everybody to do this work. And I understand and I recognize that nobody wants to put a price tag on it. You can't. And I'm speaking from a lived experience. I have lived it. I have family members who have been shot, who have been killed, funerals, murder, everything. I have been there. I have sat in it, and I've sat on both sides. And for me to sit here tonight, whether I win it, it doesn't matter to me whose vote I win. I just want you to hear us and, and please, think about outside of what people are telling you what should happen. You're hearing it from a Black woman. You're hearing it from somebody who goes into these spaces. Have you gone into these spaces? Have you done a ride-along? I'm sorry, on my log in my office since I've been here, I have yet to see some names on the ride-along. And I appreciate Councilman Bishop, or Councilwoman Bishop, and, and whoever else has, there's only been one other person that has done a ride-along since I've been here. So, if you want to know what the day in the life looks like, and I'm a non-sworn employee, non-sworn, I'm not a snitch. I come to work every day, just like everybody else gets up in their morning and go to work. I come to work to see what kind of difference that I can make in the day in the lives of other people. I'm not new to this. I'm true to this. So, you can sit in it and act like, okay, well, we want, we want to work with community partners too. We're not saying that we want to take their services that they're already providing. What we're saying is we're triaging these situations, trying to make them and connect them to the best possibility and the best organization where they need to be connected. That's what we're saying. But we need our officers to be able to help us triage the situation. Is it safe for us to come in there to see what needs to happen to connect them to our community partners? That's what we're saying. So, if we're going to be honest about it and we want to have a conversation, you got to be open-minded and receptive to having a conversation and get over your implicit biases and think about people who do this work every single day, whether they are in the community or in the police department.
May I call point of order just to keep it on topic and less personal? Thank you.
Pay attention to the time. So, it is 10:15.
Sure.
I would entertain a motion to extend.
Can I make a motion to extend it to 11?
11? Is there a second? Moved by Mary Ellis, seconded by James. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please say nay. We are extended till 11 o'clock.
So, with the community engagement team, this is, again, it's nationally recognized. These are methodologies that are in place across the country. It's, it's established and recognized through the community-oriented, community-oriented Policing Services Office, and it's noted in the 21st Century Policing Report. They, they speak about a number of different ways that this is extremely beneficial for the community. You know, the big one for me is it, it puts officers in a situation where we have the ability to, to make connections and establish trust. I'm not naive to, to deny things that have happened and understand why people distrust the police. That's, that's fair. But I think we need the opportunity to rebuild those. I think the Urbana Police Department does a great job for its citizens. We have a lot of great people working for us. We need to give us the opportunity to make those relationships and provide service for the communities that are marginalized, that are not treated fairly, that have historically been underserved. We can't do that in emergency situations. When we go to a call and someone is actively in an emergency or in a crisis, that's not the time to be able to build a relationship or have hard conversations or work through the past issues. We would love to have those conversations. I would love a seat at the table with, with any of you, with anybody that's come to council. I would love to offer a ride-along. I'd love to open my car door and have anybody in there. I'd like to show them what it looks like. I'd like to hear their perspective. I think that's the only way the Urbana Police Department grows. I think it's the only way the community succeeds is through sharing and open-mindedness and the ability to exchange resources. And that's essentially what we're, we're hoping for in this. That's, that's the goal. You know, community engagement and community partnerships, our ability to collaborate with community members and service organizations within the community is one of the most important factors. When we finish a call, the likelihood that we come back or have to create some sort of enforcement action diminishes, in my opinion, based on my experience, exponentially when we're able to connect them to a service that is, you know, right for them, that will help them in their situation. But we need to have those relationships, and we don't, as patrol officers, have the ability currently to go out and either build those relationships from scratch or to rebuild or continue to grow the relationships that we have. We have a lot of great partners already at the Urbana Police Department that do a lot of amazing work in this community. We don't have the ability to make those relationships grow and succeed and share resources with each other to where we can funnel people to the services that they, they need. And I, I think that is another crucial element to this. We need to be able to direct people to the resources. They call 911. We're the ones that show up. Once we're there, if it's not a police action, who do they need to go to? We don't have, we don't have a good answer for that currently. We have some resources, but we don't have a direct line of who we send people to. A community engagement team that's dedicated to this goal could establish those clear lines. You know, more of the same. These, these non-law enforcement events provide an excellent opportunity for police to engage with community members and let them see who the police officers really are. I'm wearing a uniform. This is not, this is, this is a job. This is my career. It's, it's not all I am. I'm a father. I'm a husband. I'm a coach. I'm an athlete, even though I don't look like it as much anymore. You know, I, I like skateboarding. I grew up surfing. You, you name it. I have a whole list of things about me that relate nothing to police work. I don't know that people know that outside of my friends and coworkers who I share these relationships with. I'd love to share that with other people in the community. I'd love to have the opportunity to build those things. I think that's what connects all of us. Everybody in this room has something in common. I think one of the major things we all have in common is we all have the best interest for the city of Urbana at heart. Our, our direction of getting there may be different, but we're all seeking the same thing. And so, I think, in my opinion, my job is to try and facilitate ways to help get us there. And I think us being engaged and having a powerful and respectful and helpful relationship with our community members is the best way the Urbana Police Department helps us get there. This is a list of, you know, amazing resources we have in, in the community. I'm sure you guys will recognize every single one of those names. I probably left some off. We don't utilize them enough. I, I know that there are opportunities where we could be forwarding things to some of these organizations. We just don't have the resources at this point. And again, if you imagine the game of telephone, when you, when you played telephone as a kid, and by the time it hits the third or fourth person, there's a lot lost in translation. I would liken these services to that. We're there first. We have a lot of detail and insight, and we can provide a lot of help and direction if given the opportunity. And I think having us there, having the ability to build these relationships, and having a dedicated community team that can focus the direction of people that need help towards the right resources will be crucial in, you know, outcomes for people in the, in the city of Urbana. So, I think LaShonda's already shared her, her shared experiences and her life experiences. I've shared some of mine. You know, I, I'd love to talk more with you individually, too. In front of a lot of people is not typically my MO. I like to do my work behind the scenes, and I'm out of my comfort zone currently. But I would be more than welcome to, to sit down and have a cup of coffee with you, share what I've seen, what my anecdotal experiences are. But as a whole, I can tell you, the Urbana Police Department has some excellent people. The citizens of Urbana are excellent people, and I think we all could do a better job working together to make sure that everybody's having the best opportunity to live their life that they can.
Any questions? Mary Ellis.
Slowly raising my hand so other people can. So, one question I have is, in the community responders, you had mentioned, there was some talk about an alternative response model, but then there was also talk about taking calls that maybe we don't need to send sworn officers. I'm trying to delineate between whether or not you're suggesting that the two community response, sorry, three, right, three non-sworn, two. So, okay, two non-sworn plus a social worker, which makes three. Is that an alternative response, or is that taking some of the duties that aren't mental health-related away? I'm trying to distinguish between those two things.
All right. Good question. So, the two community response will respond to things such as, let's say, loud music. Okay. Also, what was the second part of your question?
So, you know, there's been a lot of conversation about mental health and who are the appropriate practitioners for that. So, that's, I'm trying to figure out.
Right. So, there's the two buckets, to use Carol's response. There's, there's folks that are community service responders, non-uniform, responding to low-hanging fruit such as vandalism, loud music, et cetera. Then over here, you have the community health clinician. Okay. Now, there's two train of thoughts with respect to that. I don't advocate one going by themselves or going anywhere by themselves. I know there's an appetite for that. But as you look at this model, I'm almost certain at some point, you're going to have to put an officer involved in that. You just cannot completely take law enforcement out of any equation. I don't, I don't care what kind of call it is, because calls change on the dime. It may start out as Johnny won't go to school and Johnny's in his bedroom with a gun. It calls change on the dime. So, this notion about not needing police, that's, that doesn't make any sense to me. Again, I embrace alternative response. I come from an institution where we started that, and I've seen it work, but I never, I've never seen it done without police oversight, some police involvement. I just hadn't seen that.
So, if I, there's been a lot of comment about the, the non-criminal aspects in the Barry Dunn reports. I, I just pulled up the most frequent items here. Domestic, check welfare, remove subject, alarm, meet complaint disorderly, and it kind of goes down the, the list there. Some things I think, you know, probably would require some kind of police response. Suspicious person, for example, that, that's something that could turn into a situation. But check welfare, that, I mean, those are two extremes, right, out of that non-criminal list where check welfare could potentially be done by a social worker, a healthcare worker, you know, somebody that's not a sworn police officer versus, there's a suspicious person hanging around my house. Two very different things, but still in the same bucket of non-criminal. And so, that's, that's the area that I'm trying to discern here, because I think, I don't want to say too much here because I'm trying to ask questions, but I just will put this out there. I don't think that there is anybody at all in this room who's against an alternative response model. I don't think there's anybody here who wouldn't want to fund that. The question is, how is it done? That's the devil in the details. So, that's why I was going to pose that question to you in terms of the, the two that you're talking about and how that is situated in that alternative response model and how that is situated in the non-criminal activities that Barry Dunn.
Yeah, I understand that question. You know, you asked how it's done. It's done with the oversight from my experience of PD. I mean, what that looks like, the community I mean, what that looks like, the community service responders working the street, the mental health clinician working the street, and as calls come out, a sergeant is responsible for saying, no, I think we're going to send sworn to that based on some of the information I may know about that. No, I think that's call is okay to send the community service responder. No, I think we need to send the mental health clinician to that type of call, et cetera, et cetera. This idea of no police oversight, I don't know that world, okay? I keep saying that because I don't want to give the impression that I don't embrace alternative policing. But the only model I know involves law enforcement. But I am open to other ideas, but I don't have a lot of confidence down the road, long range, that it will work without police oversight. I could be wrong.
Go James and then Chrise.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Earlier, we were talking with regard to the fire department and the SAFER Act where there was a clear correlation between overtime costs and the lack of being fully staffed. If we are increasing the number of patrol officers, as is suggested here, what kind of impact would that have on the cost that we are currently spending on overtime?
Don't know the answer to that because that world never existed here. I can tell you this, that you're wanting to know whether or not there would be a positive impact with respect to overtime. I don't know the answer to that, okay, because you've always been understaffed. And officers operate within a certain culture, and I don't know what that culture is. You want to take a stab at that?
I think the chief is correct. I think there would be a positive impact on overtime. I can tell you that this year, we're over budget on overtime. The overages in overtime will be paid for through salary savings, so I think we're still going to come in under budget. Back in 1999, when we went from eight hour shifts to 12 hour shifts, as a second shift patrol officer, I was getting a minimum of two to three hours of overtime every single night writing reports. And in this piece of information, I can't swear to its accuracy, but I've heard it a number of times, so I'm going to suggest that it's true. My understanding is that when the city of Urbana moved us from eight hour shifts to 12 hour shifts, we were saving $30,000 a month just on overtime. So, yeah, we have mandatory callback, and Sergeant McKinney could probably speak to this better than I can because he, this is a world that he lives in more than I do. We have mandatory callback every week for officers just to meet minimum staffing.
I posted two today, so.
And that's with a current zero vacancy.
Just because, just because we have zero vacancy doesn't mean that everybody is serviceable.
I know, but right now, we're not looking to fill positions.
Correct. Correct. If we had everybody serviceable today, I'd still say that we would still have these issues. Thank you.
Chrise.
Can I, real quick too, just to be clear, when, I posted two mandatory overtimes today, that means that our minimum staffing, which, given the times that I'm posting for, is either four officers and one supervisor or three officers and one supervisor, depending on what time it is. So that's, that's the thing that Chief Boone is talking about when he says, we're on a call, we have a shooting, we have another shooting, those things continue. We have three officers working and one supervisor. I've managed those scenes before. It's hectic when you have enough people. It's insane to deal with when you only have four. There's no standard in policing that I have found that would say manage a crime scene, manage a shooting with that few of people. And that is, and has been consistent in the 11 years I've worked here. There's been a few times where we've been up to full staffing, but an injury, you know, somebody leaves, a retirement, a pregnancy, you know, things that you should, some of those things that you should be celebrating are not looked at favorably because it's a detriment to staffing. We lose people on a regular basis, but when we have those things happen, we don't have the ability to manage these calls like he's talking about.
Chrise.
Thank you for your presentation and the information. I guess what I kind of want to not just ask a question about, which is, first of all, the social workers and the community professionals that are, how exactly are we going to recruit those people? Because there's quite a shortage now, my understanding, on a national level of social workers and people who are, that's their, that's their bailiwick.
I can tell you that when the city was pricing out the cost of a social worker, we budgeted some additional funds to make the position more appealing and to recognize the fact that we were going to have a higher need in terms of experience or training for that position. So I think the answer in short is more money.
Okay. Another thing that I wanted to say, Chief Boone, regarding, you were giving an example of FUBAR. And so what I wanted to, what I wanted to say is that I've been on the other side of that in the sense that not too long ago, about a year and a half ago, though, a young lady had been assaulted and the police never showed. And when they finally did, let me put it this way, when they finally showed, she had, it was like 10 minutes after she had left, after waiting for about an hour. And so it is, it's a hard situation to be in when you need someone to help you out of a, and it was, she had been assaulted and she couldn't, you know, me and another neighbor, he actually called before I called, you know, tried, we're trying to console her, we're trying to also give her, I'm trying to give her information, go to the city, I'll go with you and you can file a report. And she was scared, she was scared of her, the person that assaulted her, assaulted her, and she was afraid of her father finding out and she didn't want to, so there was a lot of different emotions happening with this young lady at that time. And it's one of those things where something else had popped off on the other side of the city and it took priority over what it, what had happened with this young lady. So I've observed that and I've witnessed it. And the other thing I was going to say was something about the hours. I've been in position, not here, but at another city where I thought someone was breaking in to my brother's house, ended up being a raccoon, but it took 20 minutes for the police officer to show because it was change of switch, of.
Shift.
Shift. And what if it hadn't have been a raccoon? And there's somebody backing, you know, trying to get in the door.
Can I just clarify if there are other questions? I want to make sure that all council members have a chance to ask questions if they have them because it is 10:36.
So I just wanted, but I just wanted to say with everything, the information that you gave, I appreciate that information, but it's confirmation of something that I'm always afraid of, of no one showing up.
Thank you. Chandra, go ahead.
What, you mentioned the hiring incentives. What's the cost around that for the upcoming year?
I'm going to have to refer, the overall cost, I'm going to have to refer to finance. I've requested those numbers and haven't received them yet, so I don't know if they have those handy or not.
Okay. I think we estimated about additional $100,000 over and above what was already in the budget. So we already had money budgeted for the second part of incentives that started earlier.
Grace.
I think you have a few, I'll try and be quick. Yeah, I would like some more numbers. I know we have the budget, but in this budget presentation, I think there were no numbers of any, there's no mention of any number figures here for the budget. I did want to get a clear answer, it doesn't have to be right now, on the cost for police overtime. Like a dollar figure cost on that per year would be excellent. And it sounds like, should you clarify, that you expect more increases in the future? You said this is not an ideal structure, this is the starting to add staff, so it sounds like you expect to increase more in this big picture program?
I intend to continue to request additional staff until we arrive at Barry Dunn's recommendation as well as my recommendations upon hiring.
Thank you. And the community engagement officers, is there a plan for them to live in Urbana as being a way to engage with the community?
I don't know how that works with the police union, things of that nature. I think there's a plus if they live within the city. I think it's a plus anytime you live within the city. But I understand why officers choose not to live in the city. So I'm not hard and fast with respect to mandates where you live.
Sure, I agree. Officer McKinney's excellent point. If you want people to know you're a father and a husband, it could also help to be a part of the community rather than just telling people that.
Yeah, if I could speak to that too. I, you know, I coach at the rec center, I've been around a lot of different volunteer work. I'm, I shop in the city regularly, I, you know, granted, I live in Champaign, but I am not only in Champaign. I think you guys would all agree that Champaign-Urbana is a pretty, you know, back and forth type of community where you're kind of in one, you're in both. And so I spend a ton of time in Urbana. I think I spend time in the places where I work pretty regularly. I think a lot of people do know me, and I don't think living is a requirement, it's definitely a benefit, but I think there's other ways to reach that end goal also through volunteerism and, you know, just generally being around. And so I think I accomplish that pretty regularly. I think we have a lot of officers that do. But yeah, if somebody lived there, it'd be fantastic. It's a benefit for sure.
And then last one, because it seems like we already have this plan for this new kind of department structure that you have envisioned, and don't think there's a need here for more public collaboration in finishing the Barry Dunn report. First, do you think this model's already flushed out, ready to go for this year?
With respect to the community engagement unit?
To all the things you're proposing in this year's budget before completing the Barry Dunn study or having more public collaboration.
I think there could be public collaboration on the alternative response models, absolutely.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The alternative response models? I've said, I embrace that concept, but it requires the input from council and the community because I think it's only fair that they have input with respect to that.
Thank you.
But the community relations office, I'm ready to go with that.
I have a couple of quick questions and then we'll see if there's additional questions. Not to belabor the point, but the budget does show an increase in overtime, so just if we can get a calculation of why there would be additional cost of overtime, if we're also talking about increased staffing, that would be helpful. And then I was also curious about what the about $7,000 increase in contractual technology services for the police department would be.
I don't have our budget in front of me. I do know that we were requesting several technologies with respect to calls for service such as cop logic, things of that nature. Do you have it, Richard?
No, not offhand.
I will say that clarification is important because we have already voted on automatic license readers, and I think for the council, it's important to understand what technology is being proposed.
I'm sorry, say that again?
This council has already voted against implementing plans for automatic license readers, and so understanding what technology is being proposed, I think is important. Are there other questions from council? Okay, all right. Thank you very much for the presentation. I think we need to figure out what the game plan is here because it's 10:42 and we still have multiple items.
Yeah, and they're both discussion items. And then we also do still have council and put in communications. So I sent an email to the council earlier today. When a meeting exceeds its time and there is still business available, we are able to just continue the advertisement so long as we reconvene within 48 hours and it is posted, and we would just pick back up exactly where we left off within the current meeting on whatever item of business we were working on. And as of this afternoon, prior to the meeting, it did appear that there were three responses in the affirmative that they were available Tuesday, tomorrow at 7:00 PM, and only two could be available on Wednesday. So if there is a fourth that is available Tuesday, we would be able to establish quorum that's five. So it seems to me that Tuesday is the best option, should that be something we want to pursue? And it would be a recess to a time certain when that time comes.
So do we need a recommendation to recess to that time or?
So it's a motion and a second and a vote to recess, and you have to say we're going to be in council chambers at 7:00 PM tomorrow, Tuesday, June 4th, 2024.
Okay, thank you for that, thank you for that information, and go ahead.
I make a motion to recess until tomorrow, June 4th, 7 o'clock, same bet time, same bet channel.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we need to do roll call for this?
You can do voice vote.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. That motion passes. So then we are recessed.
Correct, we are not adjourned, we are recessed. We will resume the meeting tomorrow here in council chambers at 7:00 PM with that first discussion item on Ward Baps.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk.